Okay, how are we doing here? Calling the meeting to order of February 5th. Could the Clerk call the roll?
Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman. Mayor Niss. Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wilbuck. Six present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And I'd like a motion to go into closed session. But first, I'm going to speak about what we're going to discuss. We have a conference with our labor negotiators. City-designated representative city manager and his designees pursuant to merit system rules and regulations. That will include James Keen, Ed Gata, Michelle Flaherty, Charles Sakai, Romy Patillo, Sandra Blanche, Nicholas Raich, Molly Stumpf, Terrence Haazel, Lalo Perez, Kylie Nozay, Eric Nickel, and Robert Johnson. Employees' organizations are going to be utilities management and professional association of Palo Alto, UPAPA. Service Employees International Union, SEIU, general and SEIU hourly unit, local 521. Palo Alto Police Officers Association, POA. Palo Alto Fire Chiefs Association, FCA. International Association of Firefighters, IAFF, local 1319. Palo Alto Police Managers Association, PAPMA. Unrepresented management professional employees and limited hourly employees authority is government code section 54957 dot six parentheses A. Did I forget anything, City Clerk?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
Submoved.
And a second to go into closed session. Did I hear that from someone? And a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The vote on that is unanimous with everyone now in the room. And we will now go into closed session at least until 7 o'clock. Thank you.
This balmy weather, this beautiful weather that we're having here in downtown Palo Alto, while the rest of the middle of the country is snowed in. I don't know if you saw the Super Bowl, but they have plenty of snow out there and there's more snow heading in the middle of the country, but California, boy, particularly the Bay Area now, it is just beautiful. And everybody, Palo Alto was alive with the Super Bowl yesterday, seeing the great Zach Ehrst and his wife, the great soccer player, making the winning touchdown for the Philadelphia Eagles and beating the great local football hero Tom Brady, which apparently nobody likes in the Bay Area anymore, even though he went to Sarah High School. But we are alive and we can, while we had that diversion of the Super Bowl, we are now back to politics and in the Politico, life is back. As you know, last week we had the State of the Union and then we had memos and the Palo Alto City Council was busy at a local retreat getting their priorities in order. Then we had the break for the Super Bowl and now we are back with KZSU broadcast, the first broadcast of the meeting in February here. And a February that feels like May. So the council tonight plans to meet for its, for, in a closed session to discuss the status of labor negotiations with various labor unions. The council will then review the proposed housing work plan, consider modifications to the Evergreen Park Mayfield Residential Preferential Parking Program, and discuss next steps for funding the city's contribution for the Palo Alto Museum and Zoo Reconstruction Project. The closed session began at 6:00 PM and they are just coming out now. They were supposed to get underway at 7:00, but I do see signs of life and we should be getting going shortly. The regular meeting is about to commence. It is a busy week here with the Palo Alto City Council. There's a finance committee tomorrow, 7:00 PM, February 6th, at the community meeting room at City Hall at 250 Hamilton. And also the Board of Education is meeting for a scheduled retreat of their own from 8:00 to 5:00 on tomorrow at the district office at 25 Churchill. So if you really like retreats and you had a great time on Saturday with the retreat at the Mitchell Park Community Center that went from 9:00 to about 3:00, you have the other opportunity to go to the Board of Education Retreat tomorrow from 8:00 to 5:00. That retreat that took place on Saturday really focused on the 2018 performance indicators and priorities for the city council, and it went from 9:00 to about 3:00 at the Mitchell Park Community Center. The Utility Advisory Commission is also meeting this week and plans to meet at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, February 7th, in the council chambers at City Hall at 250 Hamilton Avenue. And then the Historic Resources Board is scheduled to meet for its annual retreat and its plans to discuss the Certified Local Government Annual Report, the year-end and board assessment, secret reviews, and other topics. And that retreat is Thursday, 8:30 AM at the City Council Chambers right here in Hamilton. So if you really like that retreat on Saturday, you could go to the retreat tomorrow for the Board of Education at 25 Churchill. And then on Thursday, you can, you can go to the Historic Resources Board Retreat, which is right here at the chambers at City Hall. Human Relations Commission plans to meet 7:00 PM Thursday in the community meeting room at 250 Hamilton Avenue.
Thank you all for being here. We're starting tonight with... Any agendas, changes, additions, or deletions? Anyone have any one of those? Seeing none, we will move on to City Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Couple of items to report. First of all, starting out with a few science-related items tonight. The Palo Alto Baylands Nature Preserve is hosting a citizen science event on Saturday, February 17th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's called BioBlitz. A BioBlitz is an intensive, one-day observational study of biodiversity in a specific location, bringing scientists and volunteer citizen scientists together. People of all ages, abilities, and skill levels are welcome to participate in the event, and they will be able to report and enter their observations to lowercase iNaturalist, iNaturalist, a citizen science website where the public can post their findings from nature. Experts from Palo Alto Open Space, the Junior Museum and Zoo, environmental volunteers, grassroots ecology, Canopy, Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, and the California Academy of Sciences will be on hand throughout the event to guide people and help answer questions. The event begins at the Lucy Evans Nature Interpretive Center, and any minors wishing to participate must have a waiver signed by a parent or guardian. More information is available on our website, and again, that is scheduled in the Baylands Saturday, February 17th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Next up, I did want to share that, and there's no connection between these announcements and your agenda tonight, but just so happens that the Junior Museum and Zoo is hosting a special free family event on Wednesday, February 7th. That's this week, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And this event will showcase some of the favorite hands-on activities from our elementary school science programs. Kids and their families can meet zoo animals after hours, chat with JMZ teachers, and learn how to bring more science to school. And then David, I did want to share a new piece of public art, which is at the, will be at the Palo Alto Golf Course. Meet Birdie, a welcome addition to the Palo Alto collection of permanent public art. Installed at our municipal golf course, the Baylands Course along Embarcadero Road, the playful origami-inspired sculpture by Bay Area artist Joyce Chu. Birdie looks out on the Baylands Natural Preserve, excuse me, joyfully reminding visitors of what a unique setting this is and an important habitat for migratory birds. A humorous play on words, Birdie spreads its kinetic wings while balancing on a white T as T for tee shots. As you know, the municipal golf course is scheduled to reopen this spring. You can see the artwork that is located along the golf course and practice area and is currently accessible to the general public. And lastly, just an update related to Eichler Guidelines. There's been some reporting in the news also, I think you've heard from folks. At the end of 2016, the council authorized a consultant contract for the preparation of design guidelines for Eichler neighborhoods. The public review draft of the guidelines have been available for review and comment since publication was announced at the HRB meeting on November 9th, 2017. Comments received since publication, some of which were gathered at a community meeting at Mitchell Park Center on January 18th, have been sent to the Historic Resources Board, the HRB, who is expected to recommend revisions on February 22nd. The next step following that would be to bring the guidelines to the city council for your consideration. Staff hopes to do this in April and will be asking the council whether the guidelines should be used as voluntary educational materials, or whether some of the guidelines should be incorporated into our municipal code. Our staff will lay out a series of options for council's consideration, and we're likely to receive email communications, as you will too, and other input in advance of the council's agenda item. So stay tuned on that, and that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And is there any specificity in when the golf course will open?
No, we're hoping to bring to the council, I think sometime within this next month, the actual operator contract on the golf course. And once that's in place, then we will be ready for a springtime open. I don't have an exact date yet.
But we should have a big opening event of some kind because there's a lot of enthusiasm among golfers for this to open.
Yeah, well, we should have a golf tournament with the city council members involved in it too, perhaps. Some of it might be a form of comedy or something, but it would still be worthwhile.
I hear that Councilmember Holman is quite a good golfer.
Yes, yes.
Well, he used to be, but we could call this a hackathon. Oh, dear. Not a good start. Okay, so just another note about tonight. We are going to, with your revised agenda, just know that we're going to take up the housing issue first with a hard stop at 9:00 and at 9:15, we'll begin the Evergreen discussion.
No, no, no. JMZ first, the JMZ...
Yes, sorry, shouldn't we? Yes, JMZ first, thank you very much.
Then the housing item, and then at 9:15, no later than 9:15.
Right, exactly. So it takes us to oral communications. Do we have oral communications?
We do. We're trying to get it up on the board. It's up on the board and on your screen.
Okay, thank you. So under oral communications, you can see who's up there. Niva Yarkin, Roberta Alquist. Is she ready to start?
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Pull your mic down a bit.
My name is Niva Yarkin and I live on Churchill Avenue. If the train quarter is going to be the biggest project ever in Palo Alto, you need to start listening to community experts, which we have, before you hire the real experts that we will all be paying for. Being realistic, we need to only focus on train options that the city can afford and not waste our time, energy, or money on other options. Get the city budget figured out first so we can have a realistic dollar amount for this train project. Whatever money is allotted for the trains, we know that it will probably go over budget, so there needs to be a big reserve. Stanford is doing a project for new graduate housing now. This project will be done in the fall of 2020. Maybe some of the same experts can be used for our project. I left the city manager a copy of the project. There are other big projects in the area that can be looked at too. The city will be turned upside down by the magnitude of this project with major construction, road closures, more traffic, overrun costs for the project, delays, and many other upheavals. Let's not delay by hiring the wrong experts or doing the project cheaply, but getting a project manager who is skilled, competent, and can handle a project this size. We will need other experts like structural engineering, architect, contractor, budget manager, a person with government experience to manage contracts, and many other skilled professionals. Please, let's do this right for the citizens of Palo Alto. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roberta Alquist. Roberta, did I say it incorrectly? Here she is.
City managers, council members, planning commissioners, planning committees, shape the kind of city in which we live, and that has been going on for a long time. WILF, Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, is interested in addressing the disparity between rich and poor. We have a city that is more white, wealthy, and walled-in than multi-ethnic, mixed in terms of income and ethnicity. If you walked down University Avenue 15 or 20 years ago, you would see little mom-and-pop stores, Weary's Electric, there were lots of them, Leaf &amp; Petal, and so on. Because of the rents on University Avenue and the surrounding downtown, both in University and California Avenue, we now have venture capitalists, buildings that we don't even know what's inside, but more than likely high-tech stuff. And the feeling is not one of knowing your neighbor, knowing the little store owner, but not really feeling that you could go into that building unless you knew and had some business there. We also have a homeless situation, not only in Palo Alto, but globally, in this country in particular, and with the refugee crisis, it's global. Our interest is in having the city rethink what kind of community you want this to be. We'd like it to be more inclusive, more such that people who work here, even the janitors, let alone city planners, who I've talked to and they say they can't afford to live here. So we hope that you will, when you do your zoning, downzone certain sections of town, put a moratorium on demolition of existing rental housing, and think about a more intentional, more collaborative community rather than a white, wealthy, walled-in city. Thank you.
Thank you. See you ready, and then Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and citizens of Palo Alto and neighboring cities. Congratulations to Philadelphia Eagles. And one thing nice I saw was Tom Brady was a sport, a good sport, so I think we should be proud of how he reacted after losing a close game. I'm excited about something that means to us a lot. Today I happened to run into a grocery store in South Los Altos. It's called Felipe Fresh Foothill Produce Market on 2310 Homestead Road. It's a little shopping center with a whole, similar to the college terrace size, and... It's a little shopping center with a whole, similar to the College Terrace size, and it's more produced and more items are boxed up. So I think it's a great thing for us to think about. And when I talked to the manager, owner, or family, they said, "Well, Palo Alto is very expensive, but they already have three places." So it's for all of us to look at it and encourage this kind of a store for us so we can all enjoy and have a healthy life. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, Munoz, and then Steve Levy.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members, and thank you for all the time you put in. I was thinking Saturday, they're spending a whole Saturday just for us. Well, thanks. I had, it's the same old song, but this is a little different refrain. You may remember, a year or two ago, I was really upset that Palo Alto High School was tearing down the Burge Clark gymnasium because it had toilets and showers and lots of nice floors that people could sleep on that didn't have a sheltered, safe place. And I really, I really was taught that it is a sin to waste resources that you have that poor people could use. And I noticed to, I was really delighted when I read Stanford's reply to, rather, excuse me, when I read Palo Alto's reply to the Stanford G U P. The very first paragraph says, "Stanford is creating a need for housing without the housing to fill it in." I do not think that you can, as far as you have the power, that you can permit them to tear down the existing high-rise apartments just so they can replace them with other apartments denser or better or wonderful, because somebody could use that housing. The people in the hospitals that sweep up and empty the bedpens, they need a place to live, and they ought to have a place to live. And it was Mrs. Stanford's intention that everybody on that campus be part of the Stanford family. She did not intend that it be an elitist school where only the smartest and the best and the prettiest and the most capable could be happy. So don't let them, don't let them tear those buildings down, please, please.
Thanks, thank you. Steve Levy, and then Terry Holzmer.
Hi. I came here 55 years ago. I first lived with roommates on Oxford when going to Stanford. We raised our family in homes near Duvernack, and 12 years ago, we moved downtown. I've never been able to drive a car. I don't see well enough. Our daughter couldn't drive a car. She had epilepsy. At some time, I did something that many of you share, which is to take the keys away from a parent. With our aging, something like that will happen to many of us speaking tonight, and perhaps some on the dais. So while most people drive and most people have cars, not everybody does. In our building, at any time, there are three to five people like me who either can't or have chosen not to drive out of 17 units. There are two or three more that work at home and don't need to commute. There are five families with children, one recently moved in because their children could walk to Edison, and the wife could either walk to the Marguerite or bike to her job at Stanford. While where I live and what I do can't eliminate a lot of commuting, many people in my building drive to work, one thing that we do is eliminate many, if not most, of the non-work trips that clog the streets. I can walk nearly everywhere or take a Marguerite. My wife can drive me, or I can take Uber, or not Uber, Lyft, sorry, bad me. But we use
You've got a few more seconds. We didn't have you timed exactly right.
That's not right, because I, right, there was no yellow.
No, no, as I said, this, just operator error.
Location matters as we go in housing, not necessarily for commuting, but for all those non-work trips that you can do. Seniors like Nancy and myself will benefit from either more channing houses or more places as we age and want to give up the cars for people that have them. In thinking about that, in thinking about 2030, we had a heck of a time finding a level place. Most of the places in our building are at 800 high. At the time they were built, were like townhouses, they were up and down. That's not going to work. If you're going to build housing for seniors who can afford it like we do, you want to make sure the location is right and they're level. Thanks, thanks for the extra time, if there was.
One more? Yeah, good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight about something I'm not supposed to talk to you about, which is item eight, which I know I'm not allowed to talk about. But I would like to talk about the timing and about the agenda placement of this item on the agenda. When a matter of this importance comes to the council that involves an entire neighborhood, residents in this neighborhood, I think it is imperative that the council take all possible precautions and action to ensure that the timing of such an item can be made as early as possible in the evening. I work as a schoolteacher here in Palo Alto, and I'm sure there's other people in similar situations. And I know that it is vital to prepare my lessons every day for my students and to focus on my students as much as I can, and hopefully not sitting in a council chamber at 10:30 in the evening. I know it is very difficult to arrange an agenda. I'm also the president of my homeowners association, so I know it is very difficult. However, this is an important item that involves many hundreds, thousands even maybe, of neighbors and residents. And I would urge you that when such matters come to this council, that you make these items move up in the agenda and not make it the last item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would just say I agree with everything Terry just shared, and that it makes us feel that when something so important to so many people, in fact, actually, the whole city, that maybe you don't want a lot of resident participation. And so I agree with what he says. When we have things this important, then please have them earlier on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that the last of our oral communications? Okay, thanks, thanks very much. We now have a consent calendar where we move everything in one motion unless someone has a comment or something needs to be removed. Are there any requests? Seeing none, could I have a motion to move the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, could you vote on the board? And that passes unanimously and takes us to the next item, which is
James.
I know it. There's an echo in here, isn't there? Which takes us to an item that is advertised for being from 7:30 to 7:45. We will try and get this one done by 8 o'clock so that we can move quickly into housing and then into the Evergreen neighborhood issue tonight. So looking to staff to talk about the J M Z, Junior Museum and Zoo. Looking, Rob DeGuss.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. Rob DeGuss, Deputy City Manager. It's a pleasure to be here to help present the next steps on this exciting project to rebuild the Junior Museum and Zoo. In December 2017, the council approved unanimously the design of the new facility, and as promised, we're back with draft agreements for your consideration to now build the new facility with the Friends. This evening, we'll also talk about the city budget needs for the project, over and above the $25 million privately raised by the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo. With that, let me introduce Assistant Director of Community Services, Rye Halpern. She's been the lead staff on this project for many years, and she will go over the project and summarize the agreements.
Hi, good evening. Happy to be here, and I wanted to start off by introducing to you the wonderful turnout we have tonight of J M Z board members, J M Z community members, and our Chair of the J M Z, Friends of the J M Z, Alitha Coleman. So maybe everybody could stand up.
And maybe they could all stand up so we can see who you are and who we're supporting. Wow, quite, quite a turnout. Thank you so much for being here.
Great. So this is a slide you saw in December about the J M Z. As you know, our mission is to engage a child's curiosity in science and nature through hands-on activities and interaction with live animals. We have amazing 184,000 visitors a year, and about 200 animals representing about 50 species. It's a really exciting place to go. I call it the happiest place in Palo Alto. And we're very excited and appreciative of Friends of the J M Z achieving their $25 million goal, which was really made possible by the Perry family, who offered a $15 million match. So we've been working on this agreement for about two years now, and tonight, we're going to be asking you, we have four recommendations, two have to do with the agreement, and the next two have to do with the budget. So first, we wanted to go over the key provisions of the agreement. It is, as you've seen in your package, about an 80-page agreement, and it covers a lot of different terms. Just a couple key terms that it covers is the actual demolition of the existing J M Z and the building of the new J M Z, all sorts of budget and funding issues, process for working between the Friends of the J M Z and the city, which will use a construction liaison team, the design of the project, and the actual property, insurance, construction by Vance Brown. And then we also have the use restriction terms as an exhibit to the agreement, as well as a site lease, which outlines the terms for the staging area. So those are the key provisions of the agreement. And then we wanted to talk about the budget a little bit here and the city contribution.
So back to me, council. So we do have some funds budgeted for this project in the fiscal year 2018, approved capital budget, and we have some funds built into the approved capital plan in 2019. So what you see here is what we have funding for, $3,317,000 for these items you see in the table. If you go to the next slide, you'll see on this slide what is not currently funded. Staff is requesting this evening, direction from council to have staff identify a funding strategy during the fiscal year 19 budget process in context with the infrastructure needs that we have across the city. As you can see, the areas that need funding are not all Junior Museum and Zoo building related. They also include Rinconata Park improvements. They're complementary to the, to the new facility and the new parking lot, and also includes some improvements to the park itself. So the total city contribution to the, to the project, including the ancillary items around the building, is $7,215,000.
So before we open it up for your questions and comments, we wanted to just talk a little bit about the new J M Z and what we envision there in terms of making sure the visitor experience is successful. Isn't that a great photo? Yeah, it's really wonderful. And Lee is actually in the audience here. So, so I just wanted to review with you some of the working assumptions we have in the new J M Z, and we plan on coming back next year with an, with an actual pro forma for you to look at and give input on. So we, we do assume that an enhanced visitor experience is required for the new J M Z so that the visitor will have a valued added experience from what they have now, and that more marketing resources will be used. The admission charge and new membership levels, as well as contributed income, will increase the revenue. And we do assume we'll need more staff, specifically in the areas of visitor services, floor staff, and animal care. And again, we have, as we've mentioned before, we have agreed between the city and Friends of the J M Z that within five years of opening the new building, we will again discuss the options about, talking about Friends becoming the possible operator for the J M Z. So we have some next steps, and then we'll open it up to you. We are working now on remodeling plans for the move to Coverley Auditorium in the spring. We have groundbreaking in June or July. We plan on returning to council in the winter of 2018, 2019, on a naming proposal for the new J M Z. And we continue to work, and we'll come back to you, on establishing a long-term structure for financial and programmatic oversight of the operations, stabilizing and reducing the city's financial support for the operation, and outlining the possible transition of the operation to the Friends of the J M Z. So with that, we will entertain any questions or comments that you have.
Okay, as is our usual, though, we will go to the public first, if there is any public. Oh, that must mean we're doing a great job. There's no, there are no public speakers.
I think one does want to speak.
Does somebody want to speak? And you, did you fill out a card?
I thought I was part of their
Come right ahead. Come right up.
I just, Alitha Coleman, I'm the chairman of the board of the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo, and I just wanted to give a little background and a lot of thanks. Years ago, when I met Dan Garber
Bring the mic just a little closer.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Years ago, I met Dan Garber, who at the time was the president of the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo. And he showed me some concept drawings of what he thought, what he and his board thought would be a fabulous new zoo, and the cost was only $11 million, and we thought, this is never going to happen. 15 years later, and unfortunately for me, 30 pounds later, I'm honored to be here because we, the Friends, are thrilled to be presenting with, with the city an agreement allowing us to give the city of Palo Alto a new junior museum and zoo worth $25 million that will serve our children, future generations of children, and their families for the next, we hope, 80 years. But none of this could have been done without a lot of cooperation and a lot of work and a lot of energy expended into this whole process. So I want to take a couple of minutes to thank everyone that we see as involved, and it's more than just the community. It's you, the council, because we have felt for 15 years the support of the council and the city of Palo Alto for trying to get this done. We have felt the support of the city of Palo Alto staff, notably Rob DeGuss and Rye here, over four, I think it's four years, actually, of, not negotiations, but discussions on how to get the best agreement we could for all of us. We are very thankful for the vision of John Aiken, who is the executive director, and who, from six years ago, the minute I met him, I thought, this guy has a vision for this zoo, and I, I'm thrilled to have been working with him for the past six, seven years, maybe nine, oops, well, okay. Time flies when you're having fun. And then I'm grateful for our staff, Teva, and Julie, and Charles, and Lee, because over the years, they have been here helping us and supporting us and getting stuff out at the very last minute and everything else. at the very last minute, and everything else. And in addition to the community, we've had some major donors which have allowed us to get to where we are. The Perry family, of course, everyone knows about their $15 million challenge grant. And I will tell you that when Marshall Koch, our board member who got the grant, told me about it, my first reaction was, this is really great, but now we have to go and raise $10 million. So, I'm very grateful for the Perry Foundation and the family, but we couldn't have done it without several major donors, like the Bryn Wadjiki Foundation and the Christiansens, who 10 years ago gave us $1 million and said, we believe that you can build the new museum and zoo. So, they started that, and they've given us more money, so that with my board, who has given a million and a half or more of the $10 million we had to raise, these four or five people have given 60% of the $10 million that we've raised. And we're so grateful for that. The other thing is, I would like to thank members of my board, who for the last 15 years have been steadfast, hardworking, focused, and absolutely diligent. And none of this could have happened without every single board member putting their hard time and effort into this. I want to thank especially Steve Emsley, and Annette Byelson, and Lisa Hendrickson, and Bryn Beacham, your former mayor, for being on our Government Relations Committee and working with Rob and Rye to get this contract signed. I want to thank our Master Planning Committee, Tim Stitt, and Steve Reeler, and Lauren Angelo, and Mark Murray, for helping, for working with C A W and the city staff to have a design that everybody loves and can work with. And I want to thank our Development Committee. Marshall Koch, who can't be here tonight, who led the capital campaign, Kelly Bavor, and Lauren Angelo, and Jane Raitena, they have been absolutely, the four of them have worked tirelessly to ensure that we have the funds to fund and the resources to get all of this done. So, I was going to ask everyone to stand, but I guess Rye beat me to it. And I just want just everyone to give themselves a big hand, because we got here with a lot of effort on everybody's part. It's okay. I have one more thing to say. You're not going to believe this, but I had lunch with Steve Emsley, because he, as well as everybody else, know how nervous I am about public speaking, and how much I hate doing this, even if it is to thank everyone. And so, over lunch on Friday, he and I, you know, talked about who we were going to do. We made our list, we did everything, and then the fortune cookie came. And I opened the fortune cookie, and this is what it says, "A dream of yours will soon become a reality." I am thrilled, and I want to get the shovels in the ground before I gain five more pounds.
Thank you, thank you so much. So that brings it back to us for comments, questions, motions, and so forth. And I went to call on Councilmember Walbach, who has been the liaison to the zoo for a while.
People often hold some important concepts as mutually exclusive, idealist, realist, pragmatist. I often hear people say, well, I'm not an idealist because I'm a pragmatist, or why don't you be more of an idealist, and stop being such a, be an idealist, don't be such a realist. And I've always thought that it was a bit silly to divide those up. And what I've seen from the Friends of the J M Z, and the city staff, and everybody who's been supportive of this project, is a good merging of those concepts. For years, you know, there's been discussion about what the ideal would be. And then, there's the tempering of that and saying, okay, of the ideal vision that we can imagine about what the future J M Z would look like, what's actually achievable, right? What's achievable based on the location, based on timeline, based on what's appropriate for our community, and based on fundraising? Okay, so that's the realistic tempering of the ideal. And then, how do we get there? Whatever it takes, whatever it takes to make that realistic vision a reality. And to me, that's the heart of pragmatism. And so I've been very impressed for just over a year now, being the liaison to the Friends of the J M Z, and of course, what we've all observed, even if we don't get to sit in their meetings and watch this group of powerhouses really move things forward. It's really impressive. This project and the future of the J M Z, I think, really embodies some of the core Palo Alto values, science, education, culture, nature, and imagination. But again, tempering that imagination with reality, and not just dreaming, but taking what we imagine and making it a reality. I think that's something we encourage everybody who grows up in Palo Alto, or moves to Palo Alto, to embody, and this project is just an example of that. So with that, I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Several of you had already wished to be, to speak. So, do you want to add to your motion?
Just a couple other comments. One of the challenges, one of the real challenges that we face with the J M Z is how we balance the capital costs, the operating costs, and equity and access. And obviously, we need to increase the funding that comes to the J M Z, and having tickets is an important part of that. And I know that we'll be able to continue the conversation over the coming years, as we develop the model and shift eventually to a nonprofit operation model. We'll continue the conversation about how we can make sure that everybody, even if they're not white, wealthy, and walled in, can come and participate, and bring their kids, no matter what part of the community, or what their background is, to make sure everybody can participate. And I know that everybody working on this project holds that value, and we'll keep figuring that out. So I know that that's a concern to some people because of the new model of having the ticketing costs, but I think we can rest assured to say that conversation's not over, and we'll keep an open mind about how to maintain equity and access for everybody in the community. And yes, this is a lot of money that the city's putting in, but I'd say it's definitely worth it. And the amount that the community's put in is the larger share. So I'm happy to see the city investing in our future.
Do you want to speak to your second?
I do. So again, I want to thank all of you for your hard work. My kids went to Walter Hayes, and they used to always go to the Junior Museum and Zoo, and they loved it. And over the years, you know, we've visited many times. And when you have smaller kids in Palo Alto, the Junior Museum and Zoo is one of those great places that always makes your kids smile, and you can always go there. And, you know, it's just such a wonderful addition to the community. I am so glad we're actually moving forward on this. And I'm still amazed that you raised all the money and got this done. I wanted to say the opposite in some ways, is that I think this is a great use of Palo Alto funds. When you think that we are leveraging, what are we putting in, roughly $7 million, right? And you're putting in $25 million. That is fantastic. I can't do the math in my head on what percentage that is on the dollar, but it's a great way to go. And I, you know, I just got to say, I'm really proud of all of you for putting it together and for making it happen, because, you know, it's easy not to make something happen in Palo Alto. It's really hard to put all the pieces together, have them come together, go through all of our boards and commissions, you know, come to the Council, and actually get it done. So I know it takes a lot of effort, and now all I got to say is, on to phase two. So, thank you.
Tom, you wanted to speak to the second, I mean, to the motion?
Yeah, so I guess we saw this, seems like a few weeks ago, but maybe it's a month or two. So it's a good project then, it's still a good project. I do have some questions about the financial implications. So was it a change for the city to pay for the parking lot? Because I don't remember that being discussed a couple of months ago.
A couple of months ago, I think we already knew that the city would be paying for the parking lot. Really early on, there was some hope that the raised funds would be able to pay for a portion of the parking lot, but with the cost of construction going up as they have, there just wasn't enough in the budget for them, for the Friends to be able to contribute to the parking lot.
So it looks like they are still paying for a portion, or paying for a portion?
Yes, they essentially are, yes.
We're paying for exhibits now, and we weren't before.
Right. There was a, basically, just for efficiency, there was a swap of the city paying for exhibits, and instead of all of the parking lot, and Friends paying for a portion of the parking lot instead of the exhibits.
And is that just timing to help us with our budget issues?
The reason why is so that exhibits can be handled internally by the city, because it's a lot, it will be a lot more efficient for us in terms of the work that it takes to create the exhibits, needs to start right now, and it's, you know, two years, we'll be really pushing it to be ready for when the building opens. So it's an efficiency for making sure the exhibits can be handled in the timeline.
Okay. And then, you mentioned transitioning to different governance, but also needing to hire staff. Will we determine the governance before staff is hired?
Well, the governance, actually, that's a conversation that we've agreed to have within five years. So that is not, it's not firm. So we actually need to make some changes before then, make some additional staffing before then. And we've had some really good conversations with O M B on some ways to do that, to lower the impact to the city's general fund. So we'll come back.
Yeah, just be a concern of overstaffing, and then trying to transfer people.
Right.
Okay. Last quick question. They referred in the report to creating kind of a formal entrance to Rinconada Park.
Yes.
How much is that going to cost? I mean, just that part of it?
Yeah, so there's two parts to that answer. One is that the parking lot, when we say parking lot, you have to think parking lot, pedestrian bike pathway, and entrance area. When you, the actual design of the J M Z includes a entrance to the, an entrance plaza to the J M Z and to Rinconada Park. So that is actually coming out of the Friends budget. And then, the city's budget for the parking lot is actually enhancing that plaza to a larger area. So it's really quite beautiful. It's going to be really great. And, you know, right now, the area that is, the dumpsters is, will become this beautiful park entrance area.
Yeah.
And this merging of the pedestrian and bike pathway, it's going to be really, just really great for the community.
The design looked nice, I think.
Yeah.
Not sure we need formal entrances to all our parks. I think one nice thing about Rinconada is you can park all around the park, and get to the pool in different parts of it. So if we are looking at, like, where we can reduce some costs, I just wondered if that was a potential...
It's modest, what we're doing. It's modest, it's not grand. But there is a park entrance plaza area, and it's very smart, I think.
So again, I like this project, I support this project. I'm concerned that, again, about our infrastructure budget being kind of way over budget. And we just referred our infrastructure plan to finance, I think, a week or two ago. So I'll try a friendly amendment and see if it flies, but I would, I would say that we move the staff motion, subject to referring items three and four, to finance as part of our infrastructure review. C and D, I guess, up here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, can I, just to clarify, I understand the intent behind D, that's a large unknown cost for which we don't have a pathway. I'm assuming that C, though, of course, we have the mechanics already identified and outlined as to what we would be proposing to take the action.
Okay, yeah, so then, just, I guess, just D referring it as part of that infrastructure discussion?
And I would say that...
So that's coming to the Finance Committee anyway, because it's going to be, it's in the budget process, so that will come to finance. So I will not accept the amendment because it's redundant.
I'd actually second it, second the amendment for clarity for the budget process. And if Councilmember DuBois wants to speak to his amendment, any further ahead comments?
So I do think it's important that we look at this as part of the discussion among infrastructure projects, because I think what we're talking about is trade-offs. And to kind of do this as a one-off versus our fire station, our police station, everything else, when we've just sent it there, like, a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I don't remember when, it just seems, it doesn't seem like a good process. So, I don't think there's much difference, but I think it's worth looking at these infrastructure projects together. I think Friends of the Junior Museum actually presented us with a good model. They had a two-story design, they had a $25 million budget, and they ended up cutting their project to stay within their budget. And I think that's the kind of discipline that we need when we look at our infrastructure projects, so that's, that's why I'm suggesting this motion.
The reason I support this is because I think this is a really good project and worthy of support. We also have a larger responsibility to the public, and that is a fiscal responsibility having to do with our budget. And what it looks like to me is if we approve A through D tonight, it looks like we're committing that basically $4 million to the Junior Museum and Zoo, outside of the context of our, of our budget consideration and our budget process, and outside of the discussion of our infrastructure funding. So that's what my concern is. It's not a criticism of the project, it's not an evaluation of whether it's worthy of this funding or not. It is because we are, as has been said by, you know, staff several times, has been referenced by the Council members too, we are entering into a very challenging economic time, very challenging. And I think it is just incumbent on us to do fiscal due diligence to have this discussion about a $4 million contribution in the context of our infrastructure and budget discussions. There are, you know, I've made comments, I mean, this is not a one-off comment from me. I've mentioned several times, both at Finance and at City Council meetings, that we could not be working and building our infrastructure projects at a more expensive point in time. This is an incredibly, you know, unprecedented time in terms of cost of development. And my support for moving part D of this motion to the Finance Committee to have a discussion in the context, as I said again, is consistent with those comments I have made generally, and at Finance and Council meetings before. So, I'm just trying to be a responsible Councilmember in terms of our financing here, and it should never be considered as a criticism of the project or lack of support of this project. It is about fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Councilmember Scharf, then Councilmember Walbach, and Vice Mayor Philson.
So I started in my comments with how hard it is to get things done in Palo Alto. This is why it's so hard to get things done in Palo Alto. This project has been coming forward. You guys raised the money. If this amendment passes, you won't be able to do your groundbreaking in the summer of 2018. In effect, we're saying, we're very supportive of this project, but we're not going to put the $4 million towards if this passes, which means we can't do the project. So, I will not be supporting this. I know that we can find the $4 million to do this. I know staff knows, otherwise they wouldn't have come up and brought it to us. And I know that we have a huge problem with our infrastructure plan that needs to be funded. And whether or not we spend this $4 million is not... is not impacting that. This is a good $4 million to spend. If we don't move forward and say, and reward community members for all the hard work they put into doing this, they aren't going to do this amount of work. I think this amendment sends the wrong message and is not about fiscal responsibility. This is about, this project would not happen then. And you can't make the perfect in the world the enemy of the good. And we need to get this done. And we need to have the Junior Museum and Zoo folks leave this meeting tonight knowing that we're moving forward with the project, that it's happening, that their schedule is going forward. Think of all the hard work they've put into it. And here, we're actually suggesting we may not do this, that we're going to look through this, through the budget process and decide whether or not we're going to do it in the context of our budget and our infrastructure plan. I find that stunning. I think we need to reward the people who worked hard on this. This is one of the most, this is one of the best things we can do for the community when we have this amount of leveraged funds. So I hope we'll all support this.
Okay. Thank you. And I think Councilmember Walbach, we were next.
Eric?
No, I think Cory was next. I see, I see lights from Eric and, and Cory and Lydia.
You said Cory was first.
Whomever.
Can I look to staff for clarification on what would the implications of the amendment on the table be for this project?
We're having a little bit of discussion here right now, just for a second.
Yeah, the, so just Councilmember Walbach, I think that the point here is that staff is actually recommending that we, we look to fund that $4 million as part of our budget process and in context with the other significant infrastructure needs that we have. Not asking for where that funding is going to come from tonight, but we are asking that we commit to finding a strategy to fund it.
I think that's the important point. And picking up on what Councilmember Scharf was saying, given how many other resources are coming forward to support this long-awaited project, I think we need to send a very strong message, a very clear message that we are moving forward with this. Again, I'm not going to support the amendment because I think it's redundant. Councilmember Scharf has illuminated that there may be actual negative consequences of this amendment. But for me, even beyond those, I think it's redundant because this, prior to the amendment, the mo, the main motion would still provide an opportunity for the finance committee to dig into the proper way to fund this. That would then come back to council. Prior to going to finance, staff is going to work on it. So we're going to have staff work on it, then finance committee, then it comes to council. And when it's at finance committee, the public can weigh in if they're critical of the staff recommendation. When it comes to council, the public can weigh in if they're critical of the finance committee's recommendation. I think there's plenty of opportunity for discussion in the original recommendation and the original motion, so I will not be supporting this amendment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Filson.
Thanks. Actually, I was going to ask exactly the same question that the rail chair just asked, but I'm not sure I should, understood the answer. So if we don't commit to this tonight, does the project go off the rails?
Well, I, I, well, I mean, I think that's a different question than we were getting before. Let me, let me-
What's the implications for the project if the amendment passes?
Well, I, I don't want to throw another wrinkle in this whole thing. I'm more where Councilmember Walbach is, which is, we're going to be talking about all this infrastructure issues with finance regardless. You guys are already aware of that. We identified, even when we brought the infrastructure project to the council, the infrastructure plan and a range of, a number of other capital and infrastructure issues that we needed, we need to deal with. What, all this does is say that we will look at identifying a funding strategy for this $3.898 million as part of the FY19 budget process. That will include going to finance. And as you know, the city staff doesn't have any ability to approve the budget. That will ultimately have to come to the council when you adopt it in June. That being said, I think it's also safe to say the way this is constructed is that we are committing to doing this project.
That's my read.
It's how we precisely work out how we're going to pay for it that is yet to be determined. And I don't know the, the, the actual cash flow piece of it. It may be something that extends out over more than one fiscal year, you know, this funding strategy. But I think it would be, I think it would be a mistake to say that if you approve this, whether there's the amendment or not, the, the basic intent is, you're, we're essentially saying we are going to close that funding gap. We just don't yet know how to do that. And you're directing us or not directing us as to how to proceed over the next couple of months.
All right. Thanks.
So Lydia, did you want to speak to this?
Just to say it a third time, having it go back to the finance committee and doing it through the two, FY 2019 budget process to look at all the infrastructure projects that we're going to go through, it's not going to delay the groundbreaking in June. See?
No, it shouldn't.
No.
But, but does assume we will find a solution and a strategy to fund-
Understand. It's just that we're, we're very much in support of the project, as I hear everybody say. It's just I want to make sure that, you know, going back and really being fiscal, fiscal responsible and looking at the budget, together with all the other projects that we have in terms of infrastructure, it's not going to delay this groundbreaking, at least. I mean, we're still going to do the groundbreaking in June.
Right. And that's really what staff's recommendation is, is to go and look at a funding strategy, you know, that in context of all the other interests and needs that we have and different funding mechanisms. And that's-
So when do we expect to go, when, do you have a tentative date for the, looking at the FY 2019 budget process?
It's already begun.
So, so, yeah, we're, I mean, we do that naturally, but in this, in this particular case of the council priority on infrastructure that you had adopted again on, on Saturday at the retreat, you have asked us to be sure in the finance committee, we pay special attention to these infrastructure issues. So actually tomorrow night's finance committee meeting takes up the issue of infrastructure funding starting tomorrow night.
So we're pretty much going into it. All right. Well, thank you.
So can I just clarify what Rob said? So Rob, what I heard you say is, it seemed confusing. So my understanding of this amendment, if I'm wrong, tell me. My understanding of this amendment is you don't want to commit to the $4 million now.
No, I think, not to be blunt, I think, I think you are wrong. And if you read it, it just says identifying, if you read the end of it, identifying funding sources. The same meeting, it's just saying, do it in context with the other infrastructure projects, not on its own.
So what's the difference?
Just that, that-
So, no, what does that mean?
We consider, it means if we all agree that this is a priority, we're going to have this list of infrastructure projects with overages and that $4 million needs to come out of some other project.
So what, what staff has directed staff to do here is to find the $4 million during the budgeting process. What your amendment says is that we haven't committed to doing it.
No, it says direct staff, it says refer to finance committee as part of the infrastructure funding discussion, identifying the remaining portion of the city's contribution. So, so it's still committed.
Excuse me, but we're, we're now debating in public and I'm going to call on into it.
All I'm trying to say is do it in context, not on its own.
So at this point, everyone has spoken to this. You can identify it as you wish. I can tell you I'm speaking against the amendment because I don't think that it's in the spirit of what we're doing tonight. As I look at it, my math may be off a bit, but of 25 million, our 4 million is about, it's about seven, seven and a half percent. It's a very small amount to commit to a group that has been astonishingly successful in raising money. We haven't had any other group in the, in this city that has raised this much money. So I'm, I'm supporting this and I would encourage you all to vote whichever way you wish. And we will end this item so we can get to the next one. Okay.
I'll, I'll say it after you vote.
Okay. Let's, let's vote on the board, please. You're voting on the amendment. This is a yes or no on the amendment. So the amendment fails on a six to three, and the yeses are Koo, Holman, and DeBois. So now, would you please vote on the main motion? The vote on the main motion carries with, Karen, is that a yes or a no?
That's a yes.
That's a yes. So this votes, this vote is unanimous and congratulations to the group that came tonight. We appreciate your being here.
Cupcakes. There are cupcakes in the lobby to celebrate.
City manager, you wanted to, you wanted to add something?
No, I'll leave sleeping dogs lie. That's okay. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I did want to make one clarifying comment, which was that down the dais, it was, it was implied that this was an intention to kill the project. That was never an intention. And I do not want that to stand.
Clarification taken. Please have the clerk note it. Okay, we are now, we are done with the zoo, which we left 15 minutes for, about 45 minutes ago. So that takes us to our next item, which is going to be to review and accept a proposed housing work plan for 18 and 19, and refer specific elements to the Planning and Transportation Commission for preparation of related zoning ordinances. We have only a little over a half an hour. And, and in that length of time, I would suggest if we have people from the public who wish to speak to this. Thanks, Jim.
I'm going to go here and cover it.
Yes. That should help. Okay, so with that, I would suggest that we hear from the public if they are here. We covered this item on Saturday in our retreat and had general direction to go forward. So Hillary, you want to introduce this item. You have a presentation, I know. And then, could you give me a sense, Beth, of, do you have cards from the, okay, and then there are seven cards from the public. And we will try to get to those. In fact, let me, let me just have a discussion for a minute with the vice mayor. Hillary, can you do your presentation in 20 minutes?
Easily.
Thank you. So we're going, we're going to have you do your presentation first, and then we will go to those who are listed up on the board. And as I said, we will do our best to be done no later than about five or 10 after nine, so that we can begin at 9:15 with Evergreen. Okay? Good. The vice mayor and I agree. That's the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Hillary Giedemann, the planning director, I'm joined by Jeannie Iceberg. And I wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to respond to the November 6th colleagues memo. The staff and I, Jew, relish this assignment. We've spent a lot of time preparing the draft work plan, which I hope by now you've had time to review. I wanted to give you a brief summary. This is a little longer than the presentation we had on Saturday. Hope we can get into more depth on some of these issues, if not tonight, than at a continued hearing. So the draft work plan you've received provides some context and recommendations for implementation over a two-year period. I think all of us by now agree that the region has a housing crisis. The rate of housing production has declined as the rate of job growth and housing prices have increased. In many communities, this is doubly troubling because the market rate housing we produced 30 years ago or so is the more affordable housing of today. So to the extent we are not producing housing at the same rate, we're getting ourselves in deeper trouble for the future. Here in Palo Alto, we're not immune to these housing woes. And the work plan contains data about our current housing costs and what is considered affordable housing. We define this term using an accepted definition, which means housing that is affordable to households earning 120% of area median or less. The work plan gathers together tasks from the colleagues memo, the housing element, the comprehensive plan. It also considers potential impacts of SB 35, the By Right or Streamlined Housing Bill passed by the legislature in September and signed by the governor towards the end of the year. As we talked on Saturday, we recently learned that only affordable projects here in Palo Alto will be subject to this streamlining process in this calendar year. HCD will review our eligibility or susceptibility to this program on an annual basis going forward. The work plan lays out the quantitative objectives we already have in place, including our regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which requires us to zone for 1,988 units, and our comprehensive plan projections for the year 2030. While our RENA is heavily weighted towards affordable units, and we require 15% currently of market rate for sale developments to be affordable, we don't really have an explicit quantitative goal for affordability. And we can look at this further as we move forward with the economic analysis called for in the work plan. The city's history of producing housing units is illustrated here and in the work plan, going back three RENA cycles to 1998, as shown here. Similar to the region as a whole, the rate of housing production in Palo Alto has declined over time. We will have to turn this around if we're going to meet our goals. The comprehensive plan projected 3,500 to 4,400 units between 2015 and 2030, which translates to between 230 and 294 units per year. But we're already behind this goal because our production in 2015, 16, and 17, we're not up to that level. So we have to catch up, meaning that we're going to have to produce at least 300 units in this year and the years to follow if we're going to be on track to meet that projection. So the work plan divides all of the tasks from the colleagues memo, the housing element, and the comp plan into five different categories. And I'm going to go through each one of those very briefly. The first category is ongoing projects and initiatives, and this list contains many that I hope the council is familiar with. You've asked us to review the efficacy of the ADU ordinance adopted last year and come back to you with a recommendation from the planning commission on adjustments. That's headed back to you this spring. We also have headed to you a pilot project aimed at providing workforce housing that was just heard by the planning commission, an ordinance creating an affordable housing overlay district. Of course, the North Ventura Avenue Coordinated Area Plan kickoff is on your agenda next week. And we've been working on a study of parking demand associated with different housing types and locations, which should be ready sometime this spring. The second category in the work plan is a category that includes a series of zoning ordinance, ordinances we propose to prepare over the next two years. In 2018, the ordinance would focus on eliminating constraints and making changes to stimulate, stimulate housing in downtown, the California Avenue area, and the El Camino zoning districts. It would also adopt minimum densities in the RM or multifamily zoning districts. Digging a little deeper into this first idea, that one of the biggest challenges getting more housing downtown will be that most of the sites we're talking about are already developed with existing buildings and uses that are generating rent. So something has to pencil for the owner to engage in redevelopment of that site. In the recent past, we know that it has penciled for owners to redevelop sites in downtown, and we have a few examples of recent buildings shown up here. But what our code is doing right now is causing owners and developers to build office space rather than housing. So what we're going to be looking at is whether, within these building envelopes and the constraints we have in the zoning ordinance, whether those can be adjusted to make it easier and actually incentivize building, housing in the downtown and these other transit-served areas. In 2019, we'll look at other ordinance revisions, including some that might affect the R1 and the R2 district and need some further thought. The third category in the work plan is, consists of a few things from the colleagues memo that we cannot implement without an economic analysis. So we have one of the consultants who helped us with the update to our housing impact fee ordinance, within the last couple of years poised to undertake this study as soon as the council gives us the go-ahead on the work plan, hoping that that will lead to another ordinance for council's consideration by the end of this year. The fourth category in the work plan has to do with money. These are the funds that are set aside for the purpose of preserving or producing affordable housing in Palo Alto. They're made up of impact fees paid by developers, the work plans- The work plan summarizes the current fund balances, what it costs generally to build a new unit of affordable housing, and what kind of subsidy the city has typically had to put into a project per unit to make the project feasible. If you use that historic subsidy level, we have enough in our funds right now to build approximately, or to subsidize approximately, 100 affordable units. Of course, that can only happen with other subsidies that the project will have to avail themselves of, including tax credits that are now somewhat harder to get, I'm sure, because of the federal tax bill, and subsidies potentially associated with County Measure A. If this fourth category works out as we suggest, we would issue a notice of funding availability, basically asking for proposals from entities wishing to use the funds to preserve or create housing, evaluate those proposals, and come up with a way to spend the city's money and actually create some units through subsidization this year. The fifth category includes a number of partnership opportunities, most of which I think the council is aware of. The county courthouse site is here, the Coverley Master Plan is here, looking at the potential for housing development on Stanford-owned sites, as called for in the comprehensive plan, is here, and a number of other ideas. The work plan is based on an assessment of current resources available to us and a number of important assumptions. First and foremost, I think we all understand that we did a lot of community engagement, a lot of work with the community on the housing element and the comprehensive plan update. We don't propose to redo that. What we're proposing here instead is very targeted outreach, particularly to people who have experienced developing housing and using our zoning ordinance, to really find the levers that we need to push to make it more attractive to owners to redevelop their sites and provide the housing that we need. We also assume that we can use the comprehensive plan EIR and do only limited additional sequel review, and we're assuming there'll be a relatively straight trajectory here. We're hoping that the ideas we've outlined for the ordinances, for example, are things that came right from the colleagues' memo and other policy documents, and therefore we have the council's backing to proceed with those in an orderly fashion. The work plan has a timeline, lays out some of the items and how they play in relation to each other. We can easily go into discussion of that in more depth. But to get us started in a positive direction, we're recommending for this evening or next week, if you continue this item, that the council first accept the draft work plan, then refer the 2018 zoning ordinance elements, I think that's on page 26 of the plan, to the Planning and Transportation Commission for their work, and asking them to return an ordinance to the council for consideration sometime this year, and then refer the economic analysis and the notice of funding availability and review of proposals to policy and services. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to hear from the public and any of your questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll hold questions until we go to the public. And everyone, is this online, Hillary? Can people pull this up online, I presume? They can. Yes, thanks. Okay. The names are listed up on the board, starting with Danny Ross, Steve Levy, Bonnie Packer, Bob Moss, Elaine Wang, Pilar Lorenzana, and Grant Dashar. And if there are others who wish to speak, would you get a card from the clerk or give her a card? Thanks. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Danny Ross, and I'm a senior development manager at Palo Alto Housing. I'm excited this evening to see progress towards the development of housing in Palo Alto and applaud staff for their work on this housing work plan. I'm very hopeful that the affordable housing overlay is reviewed and implemented quickly, because we are eager to continue our effort at our Wilton and El Camino Real project. The overlay option was the preferred path selected by a majority of council during our study session in August of last year, six months ago. While Palo Alto is our hometown, we've expanded into San Mateo County and have been looking for sites as far south as San Jose. The housing crisis is a regional issue and one the city cannot solve alone. In addition to our 25 existing Palo Alto properties and proposed new development site at Wilton, we would love to provide even more affordable housing within this city as well. One of the major challenges that we face at our Wilton project, and a key reason why we have not attempted to secure additional sites in Palo Alto at this time, is the retail preservation ordinance. The ordinance responds to office space taking over retail space, however, there are unintended consequences for affordable housing development. Any use on one of our projects that is not housing or specifically serving housing, such as retail and parking for retail, is not eligible for tax credits. For 100% affordable developments, tax credits make up the majority of a project's financing, and without those credits, no new construction is financially feasible. The retail preservation ordinance, therefore, puts retail ahead of housing development as it does not consider 100% affordable housing projects. I hope council considers these impacts while assessing existing and proposed policies towards the effort of providing additional affordable housing. I would love to see the retail preservation ordinance waived for 100% affordable housing developments. Short of that, some clear flexibility defined in the code would be very helpful for our current and potential projects. Thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Stephen Levy.
I support the work plan. I have two additions for the economic analysis. One is what Danny just talked about. I agree with his position, but I'd really like to have a retail expert come in and explain to the audience and to the council the implications of the retail ordinance outside of downtown and outside of Calav, where I understand it, in places like El Camino, apart from everything and for affordable housing. So I'd like to see the impact of the retail ordinance on the viability and financing of affordable housing studied. The second piece is, in consideration of going from 15% to 20% for inclusionary zoning, I'd like to see the economic analysis understand the impact if a portion of that inclusionary zoning is missing middle housing, as opposed to straight low-income housing. I was very pleased that Palo Alto Housing last Wednesday for the 2575, 55 El Camino project came out in support of the missing middle component, and we're very excited to get the money. So I'd like the economic analysis to look into whether having a portion directed to the missing middle is important. I support what council member Scharf said at the retreat. I think downtown and Calav are the prime places for the quality of life reasons I talked. And if down the road, apart from this, you'd like to support a low-income housing bond in California, I would love to be part, in Palo Alto, I'd love to be part of that campaign.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Ness, city council members. The League of Women Voters of Palo Alto supports efforts by the city to increase the supply of housing for all, particularly for those with lower incomes. The League also supports walkable, mixed-use developments and efforts to increase the number and density of multiple-family units, especially near transit centers and along transportation corridors. For this reason, we encourage you to adopt all the recommendations contained in the staff memo submitting the housing work plan for 2018, 19. The excellent proposals in this work plan include urgently needed zoning updates that will encourage diverse housing near jobs, transit, and services. The League particularly supports the use of the city's affordable housing funds to stimulate the rehabilitation and the development of new affordable housing. And we also applaud the recognition to address workforce or missing middle housing as well. Please do what is necessary to ensure that the housing work plan recommendations, particularly the zoning updates, are implemented with all due speed to address the current housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob Moss and Elaine Wang.
Thank you, Mayor Ness, and council members. I have some disagreements with the letter that was sent by the council members and by the mayor, making some suggestions, and here are my objections. Eliminating the housing units and going strictly FAR will eliminate your knowledge of what you're actually going to be developing. You will not be able to predict traffic impacts, because every housing unit, multifamily, generates eight trips per day. If you don't know how many units are going in there, you don't know how many trips you're going to generate. Every housing unit creates a negative cost to the city of about $2,800 per year for services. If you don't know how many units are going in, you don't know how much it's going to cost the city. Furthermore, it makes it impossible for anybody living anywhere near that area to have any concept of what's going to be developed there in the future. School districts will have no idea of how many students are going to be generated by developments. You have to have zoning which specifies what does and doesn't go in. Secondly, you do not want to eliminate parking for housing, saying that people are going to take transit. They don't do that. To give you an example, Palo Alto Central, which is at the corner of California and Park, I talked to the chairman of the homeowners association several years ago. They are right across the parking lot from the Caltrain station. 85% of the people that live there drive alone to work. They don't take transit. People don't take transit in place of driving. So don't think that you can eliminate parking spaces. Finally, when you talk about housing affordability, you have to realize that Palo Alto has some of the highest cost of land in the country, $9 million an acre. That makes it extremely expensive to have affordable housing, and unless you can bring the land cost down, you're going to have real problems, and I don't think that's going to happen.
Thank you, Elaine Wang, and then Pilar Lorenzana.
Thank you, council members, for taking this up. This is really important. I've been thinking about two friends lately, both named Mary. One actually came to me this week. She's a longtime childcare educator. She came to me this week, and she said, she's got to go, the rent's increasing, can I help her find a place somewhere? Another friend, Mary, told me a couple of months ago that if she gets another rent increase, she's gone. She's a 25, 30-year resident of the city of Palo Alto, lives downtown, walks everywhere, doesn't own a car. She's exactly the kind of person that I think we should be targeting our housing work plan toward, and she's on the rocks. And I think at the source of all of this is scarcity. It's housing scarcity. We have artificially scarified our housing resources in our city, and the solution isn't to just say, well, we got to stop the demand. We do have to build more, and I agree, I'm thankful for Planning Director Gittman's numbers that show really how far in the hole we are. I think particular interest for me is to look around our own neighborhoods right now and see what we already have. We have very good models for housing. There's a lot of middle-density housing from the 1920s, almost 100 years ago, that are like 4, 5, F.0, FAR, that are excellent models. Hotel President, Staller Court, Casa Real. We have lots of great missing middle, and I don't mean middle income, I mean just duplexes, quadplexes, really in-between, things between single-family and apartment-building types that we can all draw from. I know tons of people who want to create multi-generational cottages and compounds on lots near downtown, but they can't, because we have density limits that preclude that. So I think we should really think about, and as you evaluate this work plan, some of the historical models that we have include those in going forward, and a lot of those recommendations have been made. And then the last piece I want to mention is just that with inclusionary, 20% of zero units is still zero affordable units. We really need to be thinking about 20% of 1,000 market-rate units to get those 200 affordable units. It's not just about 100% affordable, which is important, but we really need to think about how we accommodate our inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and then ending with Grant Dashar, unless somebody else wishes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Ness, Vice Mayor Phil Seth, and members of the city council. My name is Balar Lorenzana, and I am deputy director for SV at Home. SV at Home is a nonprofit policy and advocacy organization, and we really focus on ensuring that there's housing for all. Housing opportunity exists for everyone in our community. On behalf of our members, I'm here to voice our strong support for the housing plan that's being presented by staff this evening and over the last weekend. I also do want to take the time to thank Hillary and staff for their engagement and for the thoughtful process. We're really glad to see so many of the solutions that we support front and center in your list of priorities for this year, whether it's accessory dwelling units, the North Ventura planning process, the implementation of the comprehensive plan, or finding new and innovative solutions, such as the workforce housing overlay ordinance that you all are thinking about. We really, really support your efforts to go big on housing, and additionally, we ask that you move forward with this work plan with speed and urgency. I want to say I commend all of you for your commitment to saying yes to housing this year, because like Elaine said, ultimately, saying yes to housing means saying yes to people that already live and work in Palo Alto. Saying yes to housing means that Palo Alto is a community that welcomes people, people that cares for its children, people that raise and teach our next generation, and the people that have kept and continue to keep your city and your neighborhoods running. And I think that that is truly something that's worth our organization's support. So we look forward to weighing in on these issues at the appropriate time and to helping the city achieve its affordable housing goals. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Grant Dashar, and then Stephanie Munoz.
Thanks, everyone. I'll try and keep this short so that you can move on to the RPP topic.
Lift the mic all the way up.
There we go. I'll try and keep this short so you can move on to the RPP topic. I just wanted to voice my support for this initiative. I think this is a super-important housing work plan. I'm very excited to see the focus on transit-oriented development and building in and around transit. I think, you know, specific policy issues like targeted increases in FAR and perhaps targeted height limit increases, you know, subject to design considerations, are things that should absolutely be on the table. I think everyone else has said that housing is a crisis and we need to do something about it, but I really wanted to just start with a story. You know, I didn't have a car until I moved to California, and I really would like to go back to not having a car. I hate cars. I hate driving, and I really wish that I could get around this community without a car. After moving downtown, I think I reduced my car travel by about 80%, because pretty much everything other than commuting to work didn't need a car anymore, and that was a huge improvement in my quality of life. And I think as transit improves, I'm really hoping that, you know, improvements in the Caltrain corridor that are coming along will make it possible for me to commute, and the fact I'm moving to Sunnyvale instead of Mountain View, that will make it possible for me to commute without driving at all. And I think the only way that we're going to get to a less-traffic community is if we take a risk on, you know, people not needing to drive. And that requires us to go out on a little bit of a limb, because, you know, we're not there yet as a community, but we can be. And I really worry that if we don't take those risks, we're not going to get anywhere. So I really would encourage the council to take some risks on TDM, take some risks on transit-oriented development, and see if we really can build a neighborhood that people can get around without driving. Palo Alto is a leader in a lot of areas, and I think we should be a leader in this area, too. Otherwise, I worry that maybe our future for my generation and my kids' generation won't be as rosy as previous generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker. Steph. Pull the mic way down, Stephanie.
Good evening again. I think the council's going in the right direction, and I think the prodding from the state is, it's kind of offensive, but it's, I think they have the right idea about housing. But I am worried that the housing prices, the inflation, is going to get ahead of you. Even though you're trying hard now, it will, it's going to get ahead of you. And for that reason, I think you should make an across-the-board effort of giving economic incentives to private developers to make affordable housing. And I believe that can be done by having denser apartments, higher apartments, and they should be beautiful. They should be a contribution to the community, and they should have nice things in them, like a little café or la comida for seniors. And perhaps we should get a funding mechanism of citizens who could contribute And but, and perhaps we should get a funding mechanism of citizens who could contribute for low interest or no interest, but not as a, not as a contribution per se, but rather as a no-interest loan toward getting certain housing elements underway that really shouldn't wait. And the economic reason that they shouldn't wait is because the longer we wait, the higher the costs go. I think if you make it possible for private people to rent apartments, I think they could be rent-controlled, that it would be, it would be still worth their while to provide these apartments, and that you'd be glad you did it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to keep going? Or switch to the next item? What do you want to do?
No, I'm about to talk out loud. So at this point, we have presented the item. We can begin the conversation. We can even have a motion. I've had a conversation with Molly. We're going to continue this item next week on Monday night, which certainly we will have to do. The zoo took a little longer than we had anticipated. So I'm going to call on the first two members, but then in about, it looks to me like in about 15 minutes, these two clocks are somewhat different. What time do you actually have?
I've got eight.
Okay. So we'll give this a little over 10 minutes. Let's take it till about, I think we can take it till about 10 after, depending on which clock you're looking at. And then we will get as far as we can, and we will hold the rest of this for next week. So we've heard the staff presentation, we've heard from the public. So Molly, I want to make sure I haven't made any process error. We can continue this for next week at a time certain, or can we continue it for next week, which is the 12th, for a time uncertain?
So you're choosing a date?
Yes.
And then where that item is placed on the agenda is subject to the city manager and the mayor coordinating on handling the agenda.
Okay, good.
Yes, you can do that.
Thank you very much. So I saw, wow, I saw lights initially from Fine, Holman, and after that, either DuBois and Scharf, or Scharf and DuBois. They went on while I was looking at Molly. So, and Walbach. So some of these cannot come till next week, but Councilmember Fine, do you want to start this out?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Were you indicating that you're expecting us to continue this, or you would be willing to entertain?
No, I'm expecting this to be continued.
But you would still be willing for a motion up there? That we can continue?
If you want to make, if somebody wants to make a motion, you're free to do it.
All right, I'll do it at the end of my little chat. So thank you, staff, very much for this, and also thank you to all nine of us up here for originally moving forward the memo unanimously. This city has taken a lot of work to begin to address the demand issue in terms of jobs, in terms of passing an office cap and other measures to slow commercial growth. And in this work plan, I think we finally have a good start to begin addressing housing and traffic issues in Palo Alto. This is also a great opportunity for us to put the comp plan into action. At the highest level, this work plan will streamline processes for affordable and market-rate housing, will improve our regulations to facilitate a greater variety and quantity of housing in our community, and will also increase the amount of housing we zone for near transit.
Wish your light on.
I think Councilmember Scharf put it pretty well at our retreat this past weekend, that we need to do two things. One is we need to make it easier to produce housing, and two, we need those outcomes to be bigger. As this report details, and thank you, Hillary, for including some of the graphs, we're currently producing about 100 units on average. And through our comp plan and all the community engagement we did through that, and through this council's policy, we've roughly agreed upon a goal of about 300 units per year. So we do need to triple our housing production if we believe those goals are real. So I'm going to move the staff recommendation with one quick item to add. So that item is, or the amendment, add an item to the 2018 work plan to increase housing FAR downtown Cal Ave and El Camino to the 2018. So that will come down with my notes.
So if we can get that up on the board, thank you.
And I expect, it sounds like we're going to continue this to next week, which is fine. You know, I was just writing myself some notes here. We know there's a housing problem. That's unquestionable at this point. We've heard from the public loud and clear, it is one of their top issues, and we have some solutions. In my opinion, I think it's time for us to stop studying the issue and actually do something. So I really hope we will be able to move this forward, whether it's tonight, that would be great, but if it's next week, so be it. And let me go write my last amendment down there.
Thanks for your brevity. So let me mention now, because I think every one of you has had your light on, with the exception of Eric and Greg Tanaka, you may not have had your light on, but I imagine you will. So again, we've got about 10 more minutes to talk about this. We will continue it, and I will keep this list of when you put your light on so that we can begin that next week. So Karen, you are next.
Well, actually, Greg.
Oh, Greg, I'm sorry. You seconded it. Excuse me.
Thanks. So I obviously support this, and I appreciate the amendment. I think the amendment is really important. I think it's, it's really important to think about how do we actually get housing built in downtown and California Avenue, which is the right place to go. I do think we probably need to increase the housing floor ratio. And that seems like something that's going to take a bit of staff work, and is somewhat important to give us options, to tell us what it's going to look like, all those kinds of things, what the different options are. And so I'm really glad we're putting that in the work plan. I do have some, some small questions on the work plan I wanted to ask about. All right, pull it out. So on 2.4.5, it says allow parking reductions based on TDM plans and on payment of parking and lieu fees for housing in downtown and Cal Ave. So could staff just basically tell me what they were thinking with what that looks like in terms of the work plan, what they'll be doing, what they're thinking about?
Well, this is one of the ways in which our zoning ordinance currently favors office development over residential development. Office development is permitted to pay an in-lu fee downtown for parking, rather than providing the parking on-site. So in a sense, sharing parking by paying into a collective parking structure. And we're going to explore whether that option should be made available for housing, particularly downtown and potentially in the California Avenue area. In both areas, we're building garages at substantial cost, and new housing could potentially contribute to that cost.
So we're going to explore it, and you're going to come back to us, right?
We're going to look at options, and we would potentially draft something and include it in this ordinance for your consideration.
Okay. No, I think that's, that's helpful to understand that. And are you going to do some studies? I mean, do people park in the parking garages and then walk to their, to their apartment or their, do we have any sense if that works? I mean, we know it works with office workers. I assume it works with housing workers, but I haven't really seen it. I haven't really seen stuff where, you know, you have off-site garages, and they're not necessarily that close to, I mean, you're going to pool the money, right? And so, you know, and TDM programs historically have worked a lot worse for housing than they have for, so I'm just, I just hope that we'll do a bunch of work to understand how that works.
Yeah, we really haven't analyzed all of these things in depth, but we will do so. We'll find some precedents and bring you some, some concepts in the draft ordinance.
All right. As part of the work plan on, on the parking stuff, you know, we're looking at the Carlight project on, on the VTA. What we're doing there is that's basically based on TDM plans, right? That would be housing based on that, as opposed to, as opposed to parking, right? I mean, that's really what that project is like. Because we're obviously not doing parking, you know, they're not paying in any parking district. So I was trying to understand where that would fall into that. If we decide that's a success, that would fall into that.
That's right. And there are a number of recommendations in this section of the work plan related to parking. There's also a suggestion in 2.6.1 that we could adjust parking requirements if we get data to support that in the study of different housing types and locations. We're looking at sample projects to see whether the type of housing that's provided and the proximity to transit and services influences the average car ownership and vehicle trips in and out. And if it, if there is some nexus there, it would be the basis to make some adjustments to parking requirements.
All right. And the other question I had was explore implementing a no-net-loss policy when housing is redeveloped. I guess I want to understand a little bit what staff was thinking there. So if something is non-conforming, but there's a housing unit on it, i.e. it's been zoned for something else, it's non-conforming, were you thinking that would apply, the no-net-loss policy would apply to that?
I think we have to think further about non-conforming situations. Our main objective was when we see redevelopment of sites, and we've seen it any number of times in the last few years where you have three units on a, on a parcel, someone buys the parcel, sub-divides it, demolishes three units, and you end up with two. We're trying to explore whether there's a policy or a program the city could put in place that says you can't eliminate a unit like that without creating a replacement somewhere or paying some kind of fee. The attorneys are not certain we can do this, but it's something we want to explore with our, our consultant.
So maybe we could think about, I won't do it now, when I come back, I want to think about it a little bit. But my concern is, is that this seems to not save a lot of units, frankly. And I just want to make sure that we understand, is it then only going to be limited to, basically, we're talking about single-family residential where there's more than one unit? I want to make sure we're not talking about like on, on Page Mill where we had the six homes that were clearly, we'd rezoned it to be something else. You know, you know on Page Mill where we're now building the office development there, right, for whatever it is? I mean, there were six homes there.
Yeah, and we're, and we're building a project that includes residential units. So in that case, it wouldn't apply. But it would apply if there was a situation where you had multiple homes or a small apartment building, and it was being redeveloped for office. We'd say, wait a minute, you got to replace the units.
But if we've rezoned it for that?
Yeah, we'll look at the non-conforming.
That doesn't necessarily make sense to me, frankly, because we already charge people a fee, a housing fee when they develop office or when they develop something else. So it doesn't make sense to me that we would ask something to be redeveloped and then put an obstacle in the way of redeveloping it by saying you'd have to pay for this as well. I don't think that makes logical sense.
I take your point about non-conforming situations, and we'll look at that.
All right. And then in single-family situations, in, in single-family neighborhoods, you know, if you have a lot, say I build an ADU, I assume, and then I want to build, or I buy a house with an ADU on it, and I want to tear the ADU down. I assume that, for instance, would not apply because now you'd have two housing units, and I wouldn't want to have incentives not to build ADUs. The biggest way to incentivize not building an ADU is saying, if you build it, you can't get rid of it. So, you know, and then my overall question on this is every time we ask you to do something, the planning staff, whatever, what I hear back is you're overworked, you have way too much to do, it's a staff resource. And I just guess I want to know at the next meeting, you know, how big a deal is this? Are we talking about losing 10 housing units a year to this? Are we talking about, I mean, is this, is this where staff should be spending its time, given that we want to create a lot of housing units? And the limiting factor seems to be staff's time on doing the things we need to do. So that's sort of, and you don't have to answer that now, but that's, that's what I'm concerned about on this. And I guess I have some concern on a couple of these things besides that, maybe. And that's all I want you to think about is, we've added that, we've added, we want you to look at the FAR. I assume that's quite a bit of work, frankly, to go there and talk about increasing FAR. And the motion actually was El Camino, California Avenue, and University Avenue. And, you know, to make those decisions, we're going to need to be able to see what a model looks like in each of those. You know, what's a two-FAR look like on Cal Ave? What's it look like downtown? What are the kinds of lot sizes? How do you make those decisions? If we move to having pure FAR, which is basically some sort of form code as opposed to unit code, I'm assuming that's a lot of work for staff. So my question is, is if this is your bandwidth, are there other things that you should not do? Or do you actually have more bandwidth and, and you can do more? So I'm trying to get a sense of staff's time and ability with the goal being to create more housing and take away the barriers. Anyway, thanks. With that, I obviously support the motion. And I wanted to say, I think you guys did a good job in putting this together.
Madam Mayor, I know you know, but you have four minutes left until 9:15.
No, I made a, I've made a decision that we're stopping here. We need just, we need a few minutes to get reorganized. I want to tell everyone that I have to recuse myself on this because we own something within 500 feet of what we're going to be discussing, or actually in the middle of what we're discussing tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor, who will do an excellent job running this, and perhaps somebody.
Madam Mayor?
Who is?
Are you saying we're ending this item?
Uh huh.
So we need, don't we?
But hang on, because I'm about to read what's going to happen. We will be back to this.
For this item?
Yes, we'll be back to this item.
Okay.
And when we get to this item next week, Karen, you start off the conversation. So I'm trying to keep you in line, I mean, in order as much as I can. So Karen, Tom, then I had Cory, I think, Lydia, did you have your light on? I think by the time we're done with this, everyone will want to speak to it because this is one of our, as you know, priorities for this year. We voted on it on Saturday, one of our top priorities, and one that is not only a priority, but also one that is responsive to our comprehensive plan and to our arena numbers, which are essential. So with that, unless one of you has a question about this, we'll continue it next Monday night. Do we need a motion?
Not really, no.
In that case, then we're not really going to have one. So as I said, we'll continue next week. We are going to gather back here at 5:00 next week, where we have a long closed session, and then we'll go into our regular session. It would be, if possible, I'm going to suggest that the city manager and I take this item up first, after, after we have our usual oral communications and so forth, and then go on with the rest of the items. So with that, not needing a motion, I am going to declare a five-minute reorganization and turn this over to Eric Philse.
And that was a big night for them, council being in a closed session with labor negotiation and merit rules that took them from 6:00 to about 7:20. And that had to do with the Service Employees International, SEIU, Palo Alto Police Officers, Fire Chiefs Association, firefighters management, and city manager and the designees. That was a big one. Now, we are moving on, coming up, the rest of the council meeting. They're business, moving the council meeting along. Still have a couple of more items left. On Saturday, the Palo Alto City Council met on February 3 at Mitchell Park for that council retreat. And as they're trying to get things organized, that seems to be sort of the theme of this week, trying to get things organized now. At the Mitchell Park Community Center, the mayor introduced everybody, had an overview of the retreat orientation. There was a performance report by the National Citizen Survey, a Palo Alto Community Survey, and citizen-centric report. They then took a break, and then after that, they had a Policy and Services Committee recommendation for transportation, housing, finance, and grade separation, and the selection of the 2018 council priorities. The discussion and definition of the priorities with greater specificity and subbullets, outcomes, milestones, key performance indicators. They then broke for lunch. They came back in the afternoon with discussion and definition of the priorities with greater specific, specificity, and subbullets, outcomes, milestones, and performance indicators. And then they adjourned around 3:00. So the council, and as I mentioned before, a couple of other commissions meeting this week have retreats, which seems to be a thing to do as they get ready for the year in their focus on everything that is happening. Next Monday night, we have another broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council. We returned tonight to our, the old time that we used to have at 7:00. Got underway around 7:15 or so, because the council was in a big closed session. Got underway around 7:15 or so, because the council was in a big closed session next week. The council also is going to be in a closed session with labor negotiators, and that has to do with merit rules, James Kane, Charles Sekai, Lalo Perez, Utility Management Association of Palo Alto, Service Employees International, SEIU, Palo Alto Police Officers, and Police Managers Association. We get underway, we're going to probably be underway probably around 7:00. We're probably going to be broadcasting maybe 7:30, we'll see, but we'll be on air around that time, hopefully around 7:00. Lot of items on that as well. The council is going to review a proposed housing work plan for 2018, 2019, specific elements of the Planning and Transportation Commission. So it's going to be a public hearing on the adoption of the resolution to continue the Evergreen Park preferential, oh no, that's, I'm sorry, that's the, that's tonight. I'm thinking, God, this sounds familiar. Sounds like, sounds like familiar, they're continuing, no, no, no. Actually, next broadcast, they are in that closed session with pretty much a lot of the same people that they were in today, and it does look like it's going to be a 7:30 broadcast next week. So we'll be underway with, because of this long, another long closed session that's scheduled to go 6:00 to 7:30, although Mayor Niz said they were meeting at 5:00 with a long closed session, so they may be meeting earlier. So we're figuring our broadcast is going to start next Monday, probably 7:30 or so. And they're going to have a proclamation expressing appreciation of Fido College Paramedic Program for educating paramedics students and their support of the City of Palo Alto's Emergency Medical Services. They're also going to have recognition of the Palo Alto Science Fair Student Winners, and then they'll have a consent calendar that can turn into regularly scheduled action items. The action item next week is adoption of goals and objectives and schedules for North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan Project. The City Manager to negotiate an executive grant with Caltrans' direction to staff regarding the recruitment of a community working group and the approval of a budget amendment for the general fund reflecting $638,000 in grant funding, $250,000 in matching supplemental private funding and equivalent expenditures. And then item number 13 is, or item number 12, is the adoption of a resolution scheduling the city council's summer break and winter closure for 2018, among other consent items on that. Next week's agenda is the adoption of a resolution approving and testing to the veracity of the 2016 Annual Power Disclosure Report, an annual review by the city's renewable recruitment plan, renewable portfolio standards compliance, and carbon-neutral electric supplies, review of the fiscal year 2018 mid-year budget, and approval of budget amendments for various funds, and approval of the authorization of the City Manager to execute contract number C18169608 with Clean Harbors Environmental Services for Household Hazardous Waste Management and Emergency Response Services for a term of three years with a total not to exceed the amount of $990,000. And then a second reading, it's adoption of a park improvement ordinance for Pierce Park off Dog Leash Exercise Area, and that was first passed on the 29th, and then the adoption... Speaking of that, did you see the Puppy Ball? If you weren't watching the Super Bowl, I know some people were watching the Puppy Ball. It's sort of a protest, I guess. And I guess there's also a feline ball, but anyway, I don't know who won that. But anyway, getting back, just talking about pups, adoption of an ordinance amending section of Chapter 2.08 of the Palo Alto Municipal Code to update job titles of City Attorney's Office to conform changes to the council's fiscal year 2018 budget, and that was passed on the 29th. Getting into February, which of course is a huge much month, a very, very busy, it's been a busy month with all these things. The 19th, which is the next meeting after the 12th, is President's Day. There will not be a broadcast. Originally, the State of the City was scheduled for the 21st, Wednesday, the 21st, and that was scheduled to be here at 7:00. That has changed, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen. They're thinking it may be on the 28th, and it may be live from Mitchell Park, but it may not.
So I think we're going to start again in about two minutes, so if everybody could, in the next minute or so, start to wander back in, and I think, hopefully, the rest of council will be back by then.
So what I can tell you though, for sure, since I don't know about the State of the City addresses, I can tell you that our next meeting after next week, the 12th, will be on Monday, the 26th, for a special council meeting. It's Downtown Residential Preferential Parking Program Update and Downtown Parking Management Study Implementation Plan, Approval of the Sale of Transfer Development Rights for Avenidas' Building Fund, for a $5 million contribution of the City of Avenidas, to the City to Avenidas for rehabilitation and expansion of that property, and Approval of a Contract with Pets in Need for Management for the Animal Shelter, and Adoption of An ordinance Amending Palo Alto Municipal Code Private Intrusion Alarms to Include Addition of False Unwanted Unwarranted Fire Alarms. And then Monday, March 5, is another council meeting to kick off March. It's the approval of the 2016-2017 Public Improvement Corporation Financial Statement, and then we'll delve into the upgrade presentation.
And then there will be oral, or people can speak to the item. As of this moment, we have one group that's going to speak for 10 minutes, and then we have 14 other speakers. And so I think what we should do is the speakers should get three minutes, because it's an important issue, people have waited a long time for this, so people should get to do that. That said, if we get to an unwieldy number of speakers, right, if we get to, you know, 18 or 20 speakers, then I think it's going to get, it's going to go on too long, and we're going to have to cut folks down to two minutes. So what I would ask is that if everybody who wants to speak could please get their card in right away so we know, okay, in the next, you know, next few minutes, right? With that, let's come back to order, and Staff, you have the floor.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Joshua Mello, the Chief Transportation Official for the City of Palo Alto. With me this evening is Philip Kami, our Transportation Programs Manager. This evening, Philip's going to give you a presentation on the status of the pilot RPP program in the Evergreen Park Mayfield neighborhood, and also present some staff recommendations on making that program permanent. With that, I'll turn it over to Philip for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. So this gives a bit of the program background, leading up to today, which is not listed. The final thing that should be shown there is that the pilot program expires on March 31, 2018, which is coming right up, which means we'd like to start selling permits for this program next month, if it is approved to continue. Slide compares the Evergreen Park Mayfield program to some of the other programs and how the employee permits are allocated. You'll have to note that the downtown program does not sell out to the maximum amount of permits that are available for employees, but the Evergreen Park Mayfield program and the South Gate program do. There are 250 maximum employee permits that are available, and the preference is given to low income and those that are on the waiting list for garages and lots. Currently, there's 524 employee daily permits that were sold. Not sure how many of those have been used, because they're scratchers, they, you know, are self, once used, they become invalid. But there's no permit cap for these daily permits, similar to the one that exists in the downtown RPP. And currently, each residence can receive up to three annual permit stickers, as well as up to two transferable annual permit hang tags, and there are currently 11 residents or households that have purchased more than four permits. Businesses in, primarily in Zone A and B along El Camino Real notified staff that they were having a shortage of permits. This occurred in the last permit sales, permits are valid for six months. And there's a list of at least 11 businesses that we received concern from, there are likely more than that. This slide shows occupancy counts that were done before the RPP program was in effect. And you can see that this is Evergreen Park, that there were 13 blocks that had over 85% occupancy at certain periods. This is Mayfield, which had seven blocks with over 85% occupancy at certain periods. And this is current. So previously, there were approximately 21 blocks that had over 85% occupancy, and with the program in effect, and this is on a weekday at the peak, the highest occupancy period, there were approximately five blocks that exceeded 85% occupancy. And the average occupancy in Zone A was 44%. The average occupancy in Zone B was 36%, and the average occupancy in Zone C was 53%. These slides just illustrate kind of what occupancy would look like. The slide on the left is illustrating 30% occupancy. The slide on the right is 40% occupancy. On the left is 50% occupancy, and on the right is 60% occupancy, and this is staff's recommended threshold. With this, on an average block with, say, 10 spaces available, there would be four spaces that are actually available at any given time with a 60% occupancy, which means that typically somebody would be able to park within one or two parcels of their house. These slides show 70% and 80% occupancy. Those are both above the threshold that staff would recommend, and these would necessitate So this slide shows the current zones, A, B, and C, and also the allocation of permits that currently exist. As I noted before, there was, on the parking occupancy, there's some bunching that occurs nearest to El Camino and California Avenue Business District. And also, the current zones split some of the streets, which could be confusing for somebody parking there. So staff is recommending redistributing the zones to reduce the bunching. As such, splitting the zones, so you'll see Zone A, which is, had high occupancy nearest to El Camino, splitting A into A and B would force some of the parking to move out away from El Camino. Similar with Zones C and D, which is currently our Zone B, that would move some of the people parking in, currently right against the California Avenue Commercial Business District into Zone C. And same thing for ENF, which is our current Zone C. This shows the current zones, A, B, and C, with their average weekday occupancy, and the proposed new zones with their existing weekday occupancy. This is without redistribution, so this is before we would say that certain permits would be allocated to certain zones. This is what's happening without that. So this is a recommendation to increase by 40 permits for employees, and to redistribute the permits based on the current zones. The 40 additional permits would be distributed through A, B, C, and D, which are formerly A and B, where we had requests from employers to get more permits. And the redistribution on this sheet is based on the percentage of supply that existed under the previous zones. This is not a recommended option, this is just so that we can understand, it's really meant to illustrate the challenge of equally distributing the permits throughout the zone. It would force zones, you know, like Zone C, to have an extreme number of permits compared to its current situation. It's actually impossible to balance, even if we were to allocate zero permits in Zone E, we believe that it would still have higher occupancy. And this slide is just using the current distribution based on the total number of parking spaces available in the district, but without a recommended increase in employee Finally, we had a series of meetings with neighborhood stakeholders, businesses, and residents, and I'm going to mention some of the requests that we received from them. This first one may sound familiar, because it's very similar to the request from South Gate, but both businesses and residents, some businesses and some residents, supported this, and that'd be to create a new zone along El Camino to include unrestricted parking on the east side of El Camino Real from College to Park, to accommodate approximately 38 parked And it could, using that current proposal for no increase in permits, which is option 3 in your slides, it could easily accommodate 40 additional employee permits. I do say if an RPP is on El Camino is recommended, it would require a separate resolution, but I believe we discussed today that it probably wouldn't, it probably could be incorporated into the current resolution. And finally, these are some of the other stakeholder requests and concerns. Some of these are currently underway and we're working on, and some of these we don't recommend at this time. So with that, the recommendation before you is to, I'll summarize, it's kind of long, but to create three new zones, to make six total zones to better distribute the employee parking, to increase the employee permits by 40, to add a cap to the daily permit similar to the downtown district, to clarify some language regarding reparking, and to reference the program goals of reducing impacts and set a threshold of occupancy of 60%, and to set the fees to match the municipal fee schedule. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I think the next thing we'll do is go to the public, but let me ask one clarification since it's on your previous slide. Can you repeat what you said about adding the El Camino, whether it could be part of this motion or not?
I would like to make sure Molly's in on this, but what Josh and I had discussed, we believe that it could be incorporated into this current resolution, would not require a separate resolution. resolution, would not require a separate resolution.
Okay. So I think what we'll do then is go to the public, and we'll look for clarification on the disposition of that afterwards. So, hey, Beth, how many cards do we have?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. So let's, if you, anybody else that wants to speak, you have one minute to get in your card. And let's go to the public, and we'll target three minutes for each. But the first group will be Michael Eager speaking for five residents, and you will
My name is Michael Eager. I live in Evergreen Park on Park Boulevard. And I'm speaking on behalf of quite a number of people. This was a collaborative effort to come up with a proposal and some comments. So I'd like to ask the people in the audience who support this to stand. Thank you. We've got quite a bit to go through, so I'll try to go quickly. We agree that the RPP was successful. It's reduced parking density in the neighborhood. We had a lot of people who were parking, getting on Caltrain, parking, taking over, going over to Stanford campus. They have mostly moved out of the neighborhood. We still have some issues, so we want to talk about that. We support rezoning, perhaps not exactly the same boundaries, but if the staff believes that six zones are easier to manage, we believe that, too. We support improving the way that permits are distributed. The existing scheme has been a bit of a land rush, where the first person in buys as many permits as they want or as many permits as they can. And as, might not come as a surprise, the last guy gets none. We don't see a basis for increasing the number of permits in the existing zones. If there's more area added, as the staff has indicated today, we could certainly agree to that. But we don't believe that there's anything to warrant increasing the number of employee permits. We oppose any arbitrary density. We'll come back to that. We believe that's unsupported. And because there is a current issue with the businesses in the area, we support issuing 40 temporary permits, valid until October, to handle the problems that have been caused by the sales of the permits in the second half. So, as I said, we met all of the expectations. It was a successful RPP. The first six months, there were no problems. When permits came up for renewal, all of a sudden, there are problems. And one of our questions was, what changed? And it took a long time to figure out what changed. And it was the permitting process. And if you read the staff report, there's really nothing that says that there was a problem with permitting. It's sort of, there's this increased demand. We'd need more permits. People can't get permits. But what really happened was this land rush. Some people got a lot of permits. People have more permits than they're using. We believe that there wasn't enough contact between the city staff and the businesses. We believe that there wasn't, that the process of buying permits is not as flexible or as efficient as it could be. And we believe that the city doesn't really have much control over who gets permits, how many go to a business. All these are things which can be addressed, should be addressed. We support the rezoning of the areas. Some people believe that splitting the current Zone B along Ash Avenue would be a better plan than splitting it vertically, as the current staff plan is. We believe that the issues around El Camino and the Stanford campus are part of the problem. The people who used to park in the neighborhood and now are parking on El Camino, El Camino, which used to have some available parking for businesses, now has none. So we support integrating El Camino, both sides of El Camino, not just half, not just one side, into the RPP. And I believe that we should ask staff to coordinate with Stanford University to make sure that people working at Stanford have parking at Stanford and are not parking in the Evergreen Park neighborhood. The permitting system can be redesigned. I believe Philip has mentioned that there are plans to do this. We should only be selling permits to employers. The situation where you sell some number of permits to employers, and then the employees come in amounts to double dipping. You get, one employer buys 10, 10 employees buy 10, that one employer ends up with 20. It's an imbalance in the distribution. We want permits to be closest to the businesses, for zones closest to the businesses. We want preference for neighborhood-serving businesses. The dentists, and the medical, and the other businesses that have been a strong supporter of the community, we want to support them as well. We want to support low-income workers. Businesses which have low-income workers should get preferences. Businesses or buildings which have a TDM in place, the TDM should be addressing the parking issues. In many cases, these buildings were built with less than adequate parking because there was a TDM. If the TDM is not being managed, if it's not being enforced, it's ineffective, that does not mean that those businesses should then overflow into Evergreen Park and Mayfield. We don't think there's a basis for an increase in the permits on a permanent basis unless there is an additional area. We don't believe the city has shown that there is more demand. What we believe is that there is an imbalance in supply and demand. Let's see. Yeah, I already mentioned about the TDMs. Philip talked about some density levels. We asked at the stakeholder meetings, where this 60% number comes from? And it doesn't seem to have a basis in either surveys, in city planning, in transportation management. We don't know where it comes from. When there were slides showing what it looks like, we're not really convinced that that's what it looks like. When Philip said that a 60% density level means that you'll have fine parking within two parcels, that isn't shown by his charts and his diagrams. Distribution of parking is not even throughout the zones. It's scattered, it's clumped. It's not scattered randomly. So what happens is that all the parking will be close to the business areas along El Camino, and there'll be empty spaces three blocks away. So we don't really believe that this standard is appropriate. We don't believe it's based on a factual survey. We believe the survey was done on one day. We don't know if it's representative or not. We believe that if you want to establish a citywide standard, don't start with Evergreen Park. Wait until you get good data. Good decisions are made by good data. I don't think we have good data in this case. We have an exigent circumstance with the businesses. They need permits. They weren't able to get them during the permit renewal. What we believe the right solution is to allocate a number of permits, 40 permits, expiring in October, to handle this exact problem. Not to try and solve the problems in, not to try to solve the problem in distribution, which is what, which the staff seems to be seeing can be solved by just issuing more permits. What we see is that the, if you don't solve the problem with distribution, then every time you have a problem, you'll come up and say, oh, we need to give more permits. We don't believe that's a good solution. So we believe there should be an equitable distribution of permits. We don't believe that there should be increased permits. We don't believe in an arbitrary and unfounded standard for occupancy. Other than that, we think the RPP is a success, and we should continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Jen Behr, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jen Behr. I live on Oxford Avenue. My neighbors and I are here pleading our case because you've raised the voices of non-resident business owners, customers, and employees above our own. Despite our request to keep our residential neighborhood streets for residential use, you've allowed non-residents to buy permits to park in front of our homes. Now you're being asked by staff to let non-residents occupy 60% of the parking along our streets. With the majority as non-resident parking, our nominal residential parking program is actually a commercial parking program. I'm reminded of George Orwell's novel titled 1984. I recently studied European colonization, and I think my neighbors and I are being colonized. Outsiders are taking control of an important part of our neighborhood and using it for their benefit without our consent. Worse yet, they're doing it with your permission. It's as if you allowed non-residents to prevent us from using Rinconada Park by reserving the fields, courts, picnic tables, and pool lanes. Both the use value, our enjoyment, and the market value of our homes are being diminished because you're allowing us to be colonized. The current situation in Evergreen Park, with non-residents parking hundreds of cars there daily, and already clamoring to park more even before approved construction results in increased parking demand, is an abuse. We endure the traffic, noise, air pollution, and risks of collision accompanying such use. Others enjoy its benefits. A few years ago, you instituted a residence-only RPP program in College Terrace, a neighborhood immediately adjacent to Evergreen Park. Today, College Terrace is free of non-resident parking. Evergreen Park can be, too. Equal protection is what it entails to make it so. Please do this. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker will be Hillary Behr.
Hi. My name is Hillary Behr. I live on Oxford Avenue. And I'm here tonight to ask you to consider some thoughts about democratic governance, good urban planning, and fairness. First, let's think about democratic governance. Elected officials like you are responsible to voters. We vote where we live because everyone lives somewhere. Only some people own, operate, or are employed by businesses. In the early days of our country, we clung to the notion that property ownership was a necessary precondition to voting. We've since shed that vestige of feudalism. Like denying votes to women and slaves, we recognize it as inhumane. Each of us is represented where we live. Elsewhere, our interests are rightfully subordinate to those of residents. The residents in this room tonight elected you, and we are who you're by law representing. Second, let's consider best practices in community planning. Neighborhood streets are created to provide access to adjacent residences. They are designed for residence-related traffic and parking. This is universally recognized as a sound planning practice. Limiting residential neighborhood streets to residential uses improves the health, safety, and welfare of residents. As our representatives, that's what you've sworn to do. When residential streets are used as commercial parking lots, residential health, safety, and welfare are diminished. This result reflects a planning failure rooted in flawed analysis, misrepresentation, or other shortcomings of duty by government employees and elected officials. Residential permit parking limited to residents can at least mitigate such a failure. Finally, let's talk about fairness. Anyone who engages in economic activity is rightly responsible for bearing its full costs. Economists unanimously agree that forcing costs onto others contributes to inefficient allocation of resources and loss to society. Using neighborhood streets as commercial parking facilitate, produces such a loss. With it, we force residents to bear costs rightly borne by businesses. If we subsidize an activity, we'll have more of it. We're subsidizing building with insufficient parking and driving to work. We're subsidizing building with insufficient parking and driving to work. In your recently adopted comprehensive plan, you called for the reduction of auto use. If you're serious, stop subsidizing parking. I've addressed democratic governance, best practices in community planning, and fairness. In the name of all three, please eliminate non-residential parking from Evergreen Park's streets. Thank you for considering my views.
Thank you. The next speaker will be David Schramm.
Thank you. My name is David Schramm. I, too, live on Oxford Avenue. As a preface, I want to say that I saw us referred to as a district here, and we're a neighborhood. And just that little kind of change of language is indicative of the difference between the kind of community that I think all of you want to create here and the kind of community where people are anonymous, and our homes are not our homes, and our neighborhood streets are not friendly places that we occupy and know with our neighbors. I want to step back and ask, why are we dealing with this whole thing in the first place? And it's because we build and occupy commercial floor space without providing adequate parking. In the process, we virtually guarantee externalities. The sales pitch for non-neighborhood-serving business in this community has been, oh, the tax revenues will help our schools. But with the kind of thing we're doing with this parking, we're actually turning that upside down. You have a proposal before you to build a parking garage in the California Avenue District where the average parking space is going to cost more than $60,000. If there are two parking spaces in front of my house, and somebody avoids the cost of providing them for his business on the site or in the business district, he saves $120,000. If I take, if he takes that money last year and puts it in the S&amp;P 500 Index Fund, he makes 24 grand. Now, even if you bought your house last year in Evergreen Park, that's your tax. So what you've done is taken from the resident an amount of tax equal to what he already pays to the state and used it to subsidize the cost of the business. This is not fair. It's not reasonable. It's not going to give us the kind of community we want. It's a great way to recreate Manhattan on the West Coast, and I hope that's something other than what you want to do, and that you'll stop allowing people to park outside the business district and off the business properties if what they want to do is business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Tim Mulcahy.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for listening to me speak tonight. First of all, I have to thank the city for at least trying to come up with some solutions and having some meetings with the residents and the neighborhood businesses. I think we have made some real progress, or at least I felt like we did. And I wanted to address this one thing about El Camino. And it's really important that we get this done. Because if we went ahead and put two-hour parking on El Camino and eliminated the RPP aspect of El Camino, then we actually lose spaces for early-arriving RPP people that can park on El Camino, not use the district. And then they're forced back into the district. So it's really important that it becomes an RPP if we can get both sides of the street. So much the better. That takes more cars out of the district, more cars onto El Camino. Yes, we lose a mobile home or two. But, you know, we really need this space for our employees. They're coming a long ways. Caltrans doesn't work for all employees, and we are a long ways away from the end of Caltrans. So, my hope is that we can get this thing together, that we can figure out the solution, and we can go forward. There are definitely a demand of, in my district, in the A District, of 40 extra spots that nobody got. And if somebody else got them from somebody other part of the city, I don't know that. But I'd hate to have us come to the end of October and revisit this whole plan all over again or revisit the fact that we're scrambling with scratchers. So, in that aspect, I wish you the best of luck in coming up with a great solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Stan Belet. If I said that right.
That's perfect. See, you come often enough, and people pick up on it. Great. Well, dear councilmen, thank you for having us again tonight. I think we all understand and should be really proud of how much we began to understand this program and how far we have come. Now, we have a very unique opportunity this evening to capitalize on all the cooperation we've had with the city. And thank you, Philip. Thank you to all the neighbors. Michael Eager, Paul Machado, I had a chance to meet personally with, and I think we've got some great solutions. I think Philip has done an incredible amount of work in a short time and really picked up on the flaws of the system. And I think tonight, we have an opportunity to renew the RPP program with some modifications that will support the local businesses, the neighborhood-serving businesses, and neighbors alike. Now, it's going to require a little bit of work, but I agree with the expansion to El Camino. We have preached this along with the neighbors, and we're in full agreement from the beginning. It's going to decrease the density in the neighborhood. It's going to increase the supply. I think we also have to worry about putting a little bit of a cap on the supply as well. So, you know, going forward, I want to second what Mike Eager said, and we want to make sure that only businesses associated with that zone can buy in that zone. That takes the guesswork out of it, and I think that'll go a long way. I think we're going to have a new vendor or a new system in place for purchasing. I think having this employer-driven, instead of tracking people and see who got how many permits, they should be bought through business, and I think that's going to go a long way and really make this program predictable. I want to thank everybody. We got a lot of sympathy and a lot of support. Our business alone struggled, and many other small offices did reparking cars and doing things. It was a tough time, and I think the number of 40 permits will help us a lot, you know, to make sure having them as some Jeep permit that can be parked in the neighborhood until El Camino opens, I think is very fair. And we can build on there from there, but I think if we include those three provisions, incorporation of El Camino starting tonight, making sure that businesses in Zone A can only purchase permits in Zone A, and we direct the staff to come up with a system so it's employer-driven, so we can more easily track things and make adjustments, will go a long ways. Last thing I want to say is, the last four months were really hard for our office. You know, we want predictability. We want to be able to provide the best care going forward, invest into the materials and the people. We want to make sure that we can recruit the best people and allow them to come and drive. With that said, what we've encountered, there were some flaws, like in any pilot program. It wasn't perfect, did a lot of good, but what we would like to see, and we encountered a little wall, we want to direct the staff or the council to direct the staff or give them more authority to make small changes so that we don't have to wait six months if there's a big problem or if something didn't work.
Super. Thank you. The next speaker will be the Honorable Former Vice Mayor Jack Morton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. How did we as a city get ourselves into these situations? Neighbors feel full-day parkers overwhelm their streets, and they lose ownership of what is their neighborhood. Neighborhood-supporting businesses are unable to get parking permits. Well, first, we allow Stanford to massively overbuild without requiring that they make it economically attractive to park on Stanford and not in our neighborhoods. We also allow IT firms to move into an area where offices like my former offices have 10 employees and now have three or four times as many employees. Neighbors were fully supportive of ensuring the viability of California Avenue business and supporting maximizing the Cal Ave Garage because it serves their neighborhood. They want a neighborhood with full services. There's so little information available on the adequacy and utilization of recent parking requirements for projects approved in the last few years. The businesses and neighborhoods have not asked for a maximum garage to provide additional parking for Visa and other recent arrivals to our neighborhood, but rather to make it possible for local businesses to hire people, generally staff at the lower-income levels. I don't know where the slides and when the slides were taken, but for the most part, they belie our onsite experiences. And certainly, staff didn't meet with the Cal Avenue Business Group. If they had, we would have drowned them with our dissatisfaction with the permit process. I'm the Chair of the California Business District, and unfortunately, we didn't meet, so I was not able to take this full proposal before our board, but I will do so at our February meeting. I personally fully support the conclusions of the report that was presented to you by the neighbors, and I almost wonder, wouldn't it be maybe a better idea to have the neighbors help us design a more rational permit system? Because that's one of the huge problems, is that anybody that wants to get a permit who has staff found themselves unable to get through and unable to get the permits that their staff had previously enjoyed. We need to make more clear that what we're trying to do here is make a neighborhood and its supporting businesses function. And right now, everything's under stress, so good luck in solving a problem that's taken years to create. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Shannon McEntee.
Hi. First, let me thank you for all the work you do on behalf of our city. I really appreciate it. I know a little bit about how much you do. I have a slightly different angle than my neighbors, and that is, is that I just want to implore you to keep it as it is. It is an enormous improvement in both safety and livability. And I have three examples just to kind of show you how it feels. I live on Sheridan, which, if you know where Chipotle is and the Sunrise Senior Living Center is, my building has 55 units. That varies from families of four to single people like myself to elderly Stanford students. It's a real mix, on bicycles, with walkers, everything. And of course, across the street is a big condo building and then the Sunrise facility. An example, a friend of mine from out of town came to visit sometime last year. She walks in, she doesn't know about the parking change, and the first thing she says is, wow, I found a parking place. Now, that's number one. Number two, the Sunrise Senior Living Center, they have their own parking underneath. But guess what was always happening? They would have their changeover at 10:00 PM and at 6:00 AM, their staffing changes, and they'd be out there on the street, talking, slamming their doors, honking. Somebody's in the driveway honking to get somebody to come out and to go home. And 10:00, 6:00 AM, it was impossible. Guess what? Now, they're parking under their building where they have parking. We don't hear them anymore. And then, the third example that I wanted to share was, before the limits, workers on my street would be coming and going at all times of early morning through the day and night. And you know how cars now, you lock it and it honks, and then you walk, you say, oh, my God, I forgot my purse. You run back, honk, you get your purse, slam the door again, honk to lock it, and you're gone. All day long, the noise, the pollution, the disruption. And that has just changed immeasurably. It is so much better. So, I just wanted to say, don't give it back. Don't give it back. This is so important. My other neighbors here have done the measurements, and they're saying, you know, I just want to keep it simple. And the other thing I'd say is, if we have another opportunity in the future for bus rapid transit and things like that, we really need to work with our surrounding communities to improve the transportation opportunities. Parking isn't going to do it. It's never going to do it. It really has to be transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Wolfgang Dürger.
Good evening. My name is Wolfgang Dürger, and I live in Evergreen Park. First, I fully support the proposal that was brought forth to you tonight by our neighborhood regarding potential changes in the Evergreen Park RPP. I call us the Evergreeners. We consider small businesses that border our small neighborhood along the eastern side of El Camino Real, between college and park, as part of our neighborhood, that support the vitality and quality of life in Evergreen Park. The Evergreen Park RPP was crafted such that these small businesses also have parking available for their mostly low-income employees. And in the first half of 2017, life was good. Everybody was happy. And in the second half, no more. Why? Because a few not-local neighborhood-serving businesses like IT firms were able to buy significant numbers of employee permits. As a consequence, very few employee permits were left for those small, low-income neighborhood-serving businesses that, A, got permits in the first half of 2017 and B, for which the employee permits were designed for in the first place. So, we understand the frustration of those small, low-income businesses, and we agree to give them 40 additional temporary employee permits. But let me say this very clear. Temporary means that there's a time limit for these 40 spots, and that expires on September 30th, 2018. And we hope that City Council will direct staff to come up during that time, that's almost eight months, with a comprehensive plan how to address the seemingly ever-increasing demand for more parking spots in Evergreen Park. We have right now 250 spots given away. Now, another 40. So, what's happening when, say, on 229 North California Avenue in the former Yandex Building, when this is again fully occupied? It's empty right now. What happens if 260 Cal Ave is fully occupied? What happens if the new office building on the 300 block on Cambridge gets developed? Will we meet every six months or 12 months here again and being asked, oh, please, neighborhood, give us another 40 spots, or whatever the number might be? So, my point is this, the demand will keep on going up no matter how we count, but what the city's policy to manage, what is the city's policy to manage that demand? We have the exact same discussion again in a few months from now, and therefore, I want to ask City Council to direct staff to start exploring, in all seriousness, multiple ways to mitigate existing employee parking demand in the Evergreen Park neighborhood by looking at various options like parking along El Camino Real on both sides, using the VTA parking lot, Caltrans parking lot, and/or providing shuttle buses from remote parking lots. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Marilyn Mayo.
I'm also a resident on Oxford Avenue. Most of the things have been said. I just want to highlight, we did have a great meeting, our last meeting, with the staff, with the small business people and the residents. It was very copacetic. We were in agreement, we want to support the small businesses, maybe to the temporary permits that they need. In addition, I just want to highlight, do you know how messy the computer system is to do these permits? I was horrified to hear about it from the staff. There's two systems that you have to go into to change permits to make it more equitable. I assume there's going to be a new one coming online because it's embarrassing for this city to have such an outdated system, to do such an important program. The other thing I would like to say is, it's never-ending, the demands from Cal Avenue coming in with developments. We've got the security police station coming in. We've got a parking lot going out with a new one coming in. I think we need your help now to hold the line as much as you can to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Simon Sins.
Good evening. My name is Simon Sins. I was one of the business representatives on the original downtown RPP stakeholders group. Our family owns four small commercial properties in Palo Alto. These properties have been in our family since the 1950s. By the way, none of these properties are in the Cal Ave area. I'm here tonight to speak about a common misconception that some residents and some of you on the council have about our business community. It's true that retail and community-serving businesses are critical to our city. I agree 100%. But it's also no secret that office workers are often considered as separate from the business community, and since they don't provide services directly to the residents, they are seen as expendable and therefore don't deserve the same right to park as other workers. Retail good, office bad. This is a dangerous misconception. Many retail establishments, especially restaurants, depend on the office workers for much of their income. A manager of one of the popular Cal Ave restaurants told me that about 80% of her Monday-through-Friday lunchtime business comes from local office workers. A successful business district is made up of many types of businesses and customers. Monday through Friday, these businesses depend on local office workers for much of their income. Making it difficult for office workers to find parking will eventually drive office uses away. When they leave Cal Ave, they will take their employees with them, and those employees will no longer patronize the local neighborhood-serving businesses on Cal Ave. Unfortunately, many small businesses can't survive only on the business from local residents. They need the office workers if they want to stay in business. I know everyone on the council wants a vibrant Cal Ave shopping district. Please don't make the mistake of thinking that office workers are expendable and don't need RPP permits. Your desire to help businesses by shunning office workers will have the opposite effect. It's called unintended consequences. Please don't make that mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Sven Tiesen.
Evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all your hard work. My name is Sven Tiesen. I live in the Pie House, 314 Stanford Avenue, and you guys got a hard rope to pull here. And maybe because I've lived in Washington, DC, I feel like we got it pretty cushy right now. Thank you for the work getting us there. My family supports and uses Dr. Wu, The Steakhouse, The Bike Shop a lot. We want that vibrant community, and so I want to support the 40, what the staff report said right there. We've got 250 parking spaces, permits already, 40 more. I think that's 290. I think that would be okay. I think what's critical is what this gentleman just said. Those office workers are going to go somewhere else, and we're going to lose that restaurants that we have already on California Avenue. And more importantly, we're going to increase our carbon footprint already massive and increase the Bay Area, the size of the Bay Area, because those office workers are going to go somewhere. I just took a mess of kids' snow camping. There's no snow in the Sierras. And driving back, all I could see was new office park after new office park, just eating land between here and Tracy, and it just broke my heart. It's okay for us to get a little denser. We can live together. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Patrick Slattery.
Good evening. Staff has requested some adjustments to the RPP designed to address residents' and business concerns. The most bothersome of these adjustments is the adoption of a target cap of 60% for on-street parking. Where'd this standard come from? Nobody seems to know, but I think I may have found its source in Table 1 on Page 4 of the staff report, Existing Weekday Average Occupancy. In that table, 60% is the highest rate at the busiest time of day in the most densely parked zone. So, that's what we're shooting for. And what does it look like? In two footnotes, the staff report suggests we visualize 60% parked as a single-block face with six parked cars and four empty spaces. That little visualization is clean, clear, neat, and evenly spaced. Then, look at a real RPP with its 15 or 20-block faces, curves- Then look at a real RPP with its 15 or 20-block faces, curved streets, cars bunched together, two gardeners' trucks and a fire engine. It's not so straightforward. The point is, how would it look in a real zone, in front of your business, in front of your house? What will it be like in real life? And how does it affect traffic, bicycles, pedestrians, and small children in tricycles? It might be awful or it might just be okay. So we can't let it become the permanent standard for RPP tonight and then spread on to Ventura, Old Town, Professorville, and down to wherever it meets the bay's ever-rising shore. If we can't make changes tonight, at least ask the staff to come back to council in six months or less with a resolution to reevaluate and change where necessary the 60% standard. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Greg Forrest.
I am the owner of The Bike Connection at 2011 El Camino Real. And I started my business in 1985 on Wellesley Street, so I'm familiar with parking issues at my original home in Palo Alto. We had a terrible problem with Stanford, so I sympathize with all the people here who are completely aggravated with the situation. And I look at them and I've seen a lot of them come into my store and I think of them as all customers and I think of us as all part of the community, all part of the neighborhood. Why I'm here tonight speaking is pieces move, like all of a sudden El Camino moves or we move parking here and more cars park in front of a house. You know, if you move pieces, it doesn't matter if you don't fix how the permits are issued. If they still go to one company on California Avenue and I don't get any and I lose El Camino, that's a problem. So you guys haven't been able to answer whether the permits have even gone so far or that they're easily accessible. The first round, it was a soft roll on the website and permits in A and B never came up for us. The next round, the reason why I got complaints is people that got permits the first time lost them to people that were sitting there waiting. So that cycle is going to keep on continuing unless you figure out a way to issue the permits fairly. I own the property at 2011 El Camino Real and we got zero permits. So it's really hard. I mean, if the community decides that business should have no permits, I'm good with that. I'll figure out a way because we're all playing on a level playing field. But that's not what's happening. There's 200 and what, odd permits issued and I didn't get a crack at them. And I'm a neighborhood community, you know, serving business. I'm the answer, not the problem. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll return to council. And I'm going to take what I think is a little bit of a risk here, okay? Which is, I think there are enough issues raised and enough questions that I think our discussion would be well-informed if we were able to take a round of just questions before we proceeded to comments and motions. That being said, you know, our council has a venerable history of spending an awful lot of time doing that. So what I would ask is if anybody has a question to ask of staff, just a question, and the whole thing can be done and you don't need more than a minute or two, let's do a round of that. But I intend to be very nasty about enforcing this. So with that said, how do I clear the board?
I just push the buttons.
Push the buttons. Okay. With that said, anybody that has a question, please, please push now.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I ask just one thing?
Please.
Just along those lines. Appreciate your direction there. I'm going to take a risk too. I think that what we've heard from neighbors and from businesses and the work that's been done, that there is an answer to this that is within our grasp and hopefully we wouldn't spend three hours just doing questions rather than getting to some resolutions that I think when the time comes. I mean, I think there are some ways to accommodate the challenges that we have right now that should be satisfactory. Some of it's learning from what we've learned at Southgate and some of the things people said today. So I don't think we're starting from ground zero.
That's my vision too. And if it looks like this is going to take, you know, 45 minutes or half an hour or something like that, then we won't do that. But let me ask this. From what you've heard, is there anything, I mean, do staff want a couple minutes right now to respond to any of this?
Like to do that? Sure.
So, you know, our recommendation was crafted quite a while ago. If you remember, this item was postponed and delayed in our presentation to you. So, you know, in our conversations with the residents and the businesses, you know, we've talked a lot about adding the east side of El Camino to the RPP program and I think that has a lot of merit to it. I think if we were to create a new zone that just included the east side of El Camino, that would add about 38 new spaces in inventory to the RPP. If we were to release 40 permits contingent on that new zone being created with our typical show rate, we'd see about 15 employee permits using that area. So there's plenty of room for the new employee permit parkers to park just along the east side of El Camino if we were to go that direction.
Okay. And is that feasible?
It certainly is. What you would need to do is give direction tonight that you wanted to do that and then it would need to come back on your consent calendar so that specific notice is provided that that block face would be added to the.
And then we'd be pursuing the approval from Caltrains for that to take place as we did on Southgate. So, I mean, again.
With that, I have questions, question lights from council members Holman, Wolbach, and Koo. So let's start with, and also DuBois. Let's start with Councilmember Holman.
Thank you for that and appreciate staff input. I do have just a few questions. One is what you just talked about, about the east side of El Camino. This part of El Camino is different than the Southgate part of El Camino because as Mr. Forrest said, I think that's right, Mr. Forrest said, this part of El Camino has a lot of businesses. So if we create a RPP on that east side, are we not interfering with customer parking?
So the RPP regulations would allow for customer parking. It would allow for 2-hour parking similar to the rest of the neighborhood and the commercial zone.
Well, I understand it would allow for customer parking, but would it take up customer parking?
So that stretch of El Camino is currently unregulated, so there's a lot of long-term parking occurring there today. If we were to go to just 2-hour time restricted, which is our original recommendation, that would encourage a lot of turnover and potentially open up quite a few more spaces for customers. However, that would not allow for the employee parking. Given the fact that there's 38 spaces and if we were to lease 40 permits, as I said, only about 15 employee permits would be expected to be there at any point in time. That leaves quite a bit of parking available for customers and visitors and that would be turning over every two hours.
So.
And sorry, if I could just add one more point. And we wouldn't expect a lot of resident permits to use El Camino.
Yeah, I would think not.
So I don't think we'd see a lot of occupancy by resident permits.
I would think not, but we've had 40 requests for employee. So can staff answer the question that pops up about employers and employees in the same employment, both be granted permits? So there's like a double dipping. Does that happen or does staff know?
An employer account is eligible to purchase 10 full-price parking permits.
The employer?
The employer. They cannot purchase low-income permits. And each individual employee that sets up an account can purchase one low-income permit or one full-price permit.
So doesn't that create a double-dipping situation where, you know, where some businesses, some companies are over-represented, if you will? It seems like.
Yeah. All permits need to be tied to a vehicle. So if an employer is purchasing 10 permits, there need to be 10 separate vehicles that those are assigned to. They can't buy permits and then give them out willy-nilly to, you know, employees that may have already purchased a permit. But I will say that there is no right of first refusal with our current permit system. So it is a, you know, it's whoever can sign on the quickest when the permits are made available and purchased. So if one employer spent a great deal of time getting ready and was there, they could buy their max permits, which given the small quantity of permits available in Evergreen could eat up quite a bit of the supply.
If I can, with one exception, we can prioritize low-income and those on the garage waitlist based on opening the program earlier for those. And that's what the resolution says.
So the low-income employees, you said on the garage waitlist, so those low-income employees would get priority in the neighborhood?
So low-income employees get priority and those that are on the garage waitlist get priority.
Okay. Then it's also come up that, you know, if a building was approved with TDM program based on the parking demand, that that building occupant should not be granted permits in the neighborhood. So maybe it's a question for the city attorney. Can we do that?
Okay. We've advised you in another forum that that's not a course that's appropriate for you to take this evening.
Sorry if I overlooked that, didn't see it. Can you speak to Slide 15? I think when this one was being presented, that staff said that even though this is option two, I think, unless I misunderstood, you said that this couldn't really be accomplished? Maybe I didn't understand what was said when this presentation was being given?
So this slide shows the creation of the three new zones. So we would have six zones total. And then reassigning the total number of permits to achieve some type of equilibrium in occupancy. So to get as close to equilibrium as possible in that last column. But what you see there is Zone E has such a high occupancy rate and a lot of Zone E is resident and 2-hour parkers, not employees. So in order to get the occupancy of Zone E down to that acceptable level where it's somewhat close to the other zones, you'd have to zero out the permits completely. And the opposite of that is Zone C where you'd have to dramatically increase the number of permits because the non-employee vehicle occupancy is so low. So we're not recommending this solution because of how warped the permit distribution would be between the zones.
Understand the point about the permit issuance, but if the parking load is such.
Is it a question?
It is. But if the parking load is such that, is it really wrong to or inappropriate to not give any permits in some zones if that averages out the parking occupancy in those zones?
In a perfect world, yes. However, Zone C is the heart of the Evergreen Park residential neighborhood. We'd be assigning a pretty large number of permits to that zone. And Zone E is the more mixed-use Mayfield area directly abutting the Cal Ave business district. So I think, you know, outside of the context of those zones, I think it may make sense. But when you start to think about the repercussions of increasing, dramatically increasing the number of permits within the residential zone, I don't really see that as a feasible move.
And you sort of answered this, but Greg Forrest also made a comment about, I think it was he, who made a comment about, there's kind of a, my words here, kind of a run on the bank. So when the permits become available, then, you know, whoever's the most organized runs and gets them and somebody else doesn't. So is there no meeting out that's possible? It's M-E-T-E. Meeting out of permits so that this run-on-the-bank kind of thing doesn't happen and there's a more equitable, fair, everybody gets a chance to pass the, break the tape, so to speak?
So we are moving forward with an RFP for a new parking permit system. That would be a comprehensive parking permit system for all of our programs. And some of the functionalities that that will include will be enabling the right of first refusal to existing permit holders. So currently, existing permit holders don't get any kind of preference when they go to renew their permit. In fact, you can't renew a permit. You have to buy an entirely new permit. This system will also allow us to prioritize, better prioritize low-income applicants. And also, we're going to use it to try to persuade people to use alternative modes of transportation as well. So if, you know, instead of just getting going directly to the permit purchase page, we might suggest using Caltrain or using other modes. So we'll be bringing a contract to you the beginning of, you know, this half of 2018 for a new parking permit system that will greatly enhance our ability to manage the permit sales and also provide much better data. One of the issues we have now is bringing data to you when we come to you with these programs. It's very hard to get the kind of data that you expect out of this permit system that we currently have.
When do you anticipate that system being up and running?
Yeah.
Well, we have an RFP that's about ready to go out, so it'll take some time. And we also would like to do some testing on it before it goes live. So it's a little bit hard to say, but, you know, possibly sometime in 2019.
We'll have this before you. And there's a fairly significant expense involved in this also and so.
Of course.
We'll have, of course. Sometime in the next two or three months, I think we're.
The contract.
Yeah, the contract.
Expecting to, and I should clarify, expecting to have it up and running sometime in fiscal year FY19.
Do you anticipate it being up and running by the time of October 2018 when the cycle expires? Or will we use the system again?
That's our original goal, was to have it available for the next round of permit sales.
Councilmember Holman, sorry, I interrupted. Any more?
Just one last question, I believe it is, and thank you for that. That was going to be my next question. So I think my last question is, we have talked before also about the ability of businesses to share permits within the business. And while every permit needs to be tied to a license plate, if, and I'm describing something that's come before this staff before, if you have an entity that has half a dozen employees and they're part-time employees, let's just say, for instance, each one of those employees has to get a permit because they can't share within the company. And the other scenario is if a couple of those employees leave, then there's no possibility to get permits for the new employees.
Right. Yeah, I can probably jump in on that. When they purchase the permits, when an employer purchases the permits, it has to be tied to a license plate. However, they are transferable, so the businesses within Evergreen Park and Mayfield can transfer them within their business.
Yeah. One of the differences in the Evergreen Park-Mayfield RPP, if you remember, when you authorized the pilot, you made all of the employee permits hang tags. So they're all transferable. Downtown employees receive stickers as their first permit and Evergreen, they are all hang tags.
Thank you for clarifying the difference. And I think those cover my questions at the moment. Oh, yeah. Last question is, should, and I don't know what the outcome is going to be, should there be 40 new permits issued in this neighborhood? And it is a neighborhood and comments will come later. But why make this permanent now as opposed to look and see how this works for another six months with 40 additional permits?
Well, our proposal before you this evening would have us monitor, continue to monitor occupancy and then flag any areas that go over the 60% occupancy and then recommend adjustments to the program on an ongoing basis for areas that exceed that occupancy.
Thank you. I think that covers my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolbach.
So one's a question that staff might have a best-practice recommendation. I think it's one we've talked about a little bit before and Councilmember Holman was hinting at too. This is a should question. Should permits be issued to employers or to employees or to both? Right? And maybe that's not an easy question to answer and maybe that's something that's more a question for my colleagues. But if staff has a sense based on the experience here, best practice is, happy to hear that. And I've got, I think, one or two other quick questions.
So I don't know that there's a right answer, especially from my point of view. I can say that, you know, giving the employers opportunities to purchase permits allows them to buy permits for folks that may not be prof- to buy permits for folks that may not be proficient in English, may not be able to navigate our permit system, may not have a credit card or other means to purchase a permit. In a lot of cases, the employers will buy permits for employees that are intimidated by our permit system or just can't, you know, find the means to purchase a permit. But, you know, there are, that does give the ability for some employers to organize and, you know, purchase more permits than they would likely be able to secure if it was given out just on an employee basis.
Right. But if there was a different system, whether a lottery system or a limit to number of permits that could be purchased by employer, is that something our current system to do, could do? Or is that something that a future system, that we're putting out the RFP for?
The future system will have that capability. We're just also going to have multilingual interfaces on the new system. We're going to have enhanced customer support, you know, with a call-in center that'll have multilingual staff members. And hopefully, that system will be much easier to navigate. And it could eliminate the need for a lot of employers to buy permits for their employees.
Okay. And the, what is the occupancy target, remind me, for downtown? The downtown RPP? What is our target for occupancy on the streets?
We've tried to bring that to you several times, and it, you know, it just hasn't gotten traction. You know, 85% is the number that we brought in the past, and that's really for a downtown commercial area. It's not for a residential neighborhood. The 60% was derived from, you know, what we thought was an appropriate supply of open spaces on a residential block, coupled with the occupancy rates that we've seen in the Evergreen Park neighborhood. But, you know, we don't currently have any set threshold for occupancy in any of our RPP programs.
Okay, and so that, that was, you got to my next question, which was, where did this number come from? So it was staff's recommendation based on what you've seen in this district and trying to create a balance between the business needs and trying to preserve the interest of the community? So, but it was basically just staff's recommendation?
We're in a question, right?
I just want to make sure I understood that.
The question snark.
Yes, there's not a lot of science in this, very few RPP programs.
I'm not critical of that. I just wanted to have an understanding. Several people had asked, and I just wanted to give staff a chance to explain.
Staff's professional recommendation, given our experience in the RPP programs that we operate.
Very good. All right. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Let's see, let's see, former sheriff. Sorry, I'm looking at the buttons here.
Former sheriff.
Former mayor sheriff. No, I said former mayor sheriff.
I thought he meant I'm now Phil Fath. All right. Just really, I wanted to talk a little bit, ask a little bit about the occupancy of 60% or less. What I heard from the neighborhood is they were unhappy with the 60%. I heard that loud and clear. What ends if we deleted that sentence? On-street parking occupancy, 60% or less in the, we don't have in any other district, you know, would that be something that staff could live with?
We could live with it, but I think ultimately, we do want to get to a place where we can create some kind of threshold that would flag a problem for us, and then we could bring it back to you for remedies. Right now, we're kind of flying blind, and we rely on complaint, complaints, and there's no established threshold.
So, you know, that's what I've been struggling with, right? I mean, that exact issue. So, I mean, we could put 50%, but it seems, or 45 or whatever, but it seems arbitrary to do that tonight. And so what I heard from the neighborhood is they wanted more data and stuff. And since you don't have it in any other neighborhood, are you going to work on coming up with more data or something like that and thinking about it? Or if we don't do it tonight, is that, is that a huge problem?
It's not a huge problem tonight, but I think ultimately, we need to get to a place where we have some kind of flag that we can use to identify when there's a problem.
And if I just might add, I mean, I know the council's aware of it. We've been building these piecemeal RPP programs around the city. They've been, we've learned from each one of them, and that's, you know, that's affected the design or some of the things we try. And so the idea of a threshold or getting to standardize some of this is designed, obviously, for more than just this RPP district. There would be a way to apply this systematically. But I think the point here is, not to say this was just a grab-bag kind of number, but in one sense, it was an effort for the staff to try to advance, one, the concept of a threshold in this one. And I would just amplify what Josh was saying. It's not an absolute necessity, if you're not ready for that, for us to take that as part of this particular action.
Any idea if we include the east side of El Camino, you know, you have to come back to council on consent, how long it takes Caltrans to approve it? I know I probably asked you that with the South Gate, but I don't remember the answer.
I'm having deja vu here. I think I said, I think I said my best guess would be three months, but it could take anywhere, you know, from two to six months.
Okay. And that's from the date we submit, right? Yeah, got it. All right, that's my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo, to be followed by Councilmember DuBois, and then Councilmember Fine.
So most of my questions have been answered, but I do still have, you know, I'm trying to understand when you're, you have 250 permits. How do you determine, and you said 10 per business, how did you determine how many businesses there are over there? I mean, will the number of businesses over there end up taking most of the residential preferred parking permits?
So any business that's registered with the Palo Alto Business Registry and is within the program area for the Evergreen Park/Mayfield RPP can create a business account in our permit system. And a business account is eligible to purchase 10 employee parking permits.
But 250 is the total amount available for employees? That's completely separate from the number of permits that are provided to residents?
Yeah.
Which is 850-some or whatever it is?
We've sold 850, but that's an unlimited, that's based on the number of residences times...
Six.
Five.
Wow. So 250 employees are parking in the neighborhood of Evergreen Park?
250 vehicles are permitted to park, but only about 30 to 40% show up at a given point in time. So not all 250 are on-street at one point.
But still, and if that is such a low amount that you're saying, then why would we need 40 more in the neighborhoods? Do you mean, why increase it to 90 when you have only 30 to 40%?
Because he gave all the 25 businesses.
Let's, hey, let's limit this to staff, please.
So the, we've received complaints from businesses that they were not able to purchase permits. And we also documented fairly low occupancy in the bulk of the program area. There are some congested blocks. So we thought it was reasonable to recommend a 40-permit increase.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, so that, the 40 increase is really designed as a way to try to triage and remedy some of this allocation problem with the understanding that, again, even if you did 40, you're still going to have this low percentage. It seemed to be acceptable. If we can transfer that to El Camino, then that's a whole different issue. I mean, a better issue.
Okay. Now, earlier you mentioned that the permits are prioritized to the low-income and also to the garage waitlist. The garage waitlist, is it for the garage permit? If I understand correctly, the garage permits are a little bit more, are more expensive than the ones in the, in the neighborhoods, or are they the same?
So currently, the garage permits are more expensive, but the resolution before you this evening would equalize the prices because the Muni fee schedule has equalized the prices between RPP and downtown garages and lots and Calav garages and lots. The exception being, there would still be low-income permits available in the RPP. We don't currently have low-income reduced-price permits in the garages and lots. However, we will be recommending that in the coming fiscal year.
So...
So we'll have complete equality in pricing between RPP and garage and lots.
So low-income would be able to park in the garage?
We're bringing, we'll be bringing a recommendation forward for fiscal year 19 to create a low-income parking permit in the garages and lots.
And the garage permits are only for the garage?
In Cal, yes. So it's Calav's a little bit different. Calav, you get one permit, and you can park in any of the garages and lots in Calav. They're not assigned to a specific garage as they are downtown.
You know, somebody brought up WU dentistry, right? So those are like work-liv units. So how many, how many parking spaces are in that? Obviously, there's work over there and its office, right? Not so much retail, although WU is in there. But how many parking spaces are in there, and how is it regulated or enforced? Do you know?
We don't have that information tonight. If there's a representative from the business, they could likely answer that question, but we don't have that information.
Okay. But they're eligible for RPP?
Yeah, if they're a registered business in the Palo Alto Business Registry, they could purchase employee permits.
But shouldn't they be actually contained in their own property, since they are liv- work, you know, property?
Yeah, for the RPP program, we don't currently ask folks to provide information on their supply of parking.
Okay. Thank you. I would think that, oh, that's a comment.
The question shark is, okay. Thank you. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your name's Peter?
Philip.
Philip, sorry. So we did have a really extensive discussion about, of this in January last year. I don't know if you saw that, but some quick questions. Back then, so we had a motion to allow employees to share RPP permits. You said that we do that through hang tags. We also said we wanted to explore businesses being able to share permits in the, in the business district. Do we make any progress on that?
So, you know, with our new permit system that we're going to bring forward, that'll include garages and lots, and that's going to give us a lot more flexibility in permit types and permit terms. You know, we'll be able to sell weekly permits, daily permits. We can't do any of that currently. We're, you know, pretty hemmed in with outdated technology. We're still giving out stickers on an annual basis. So, yeah, that did register with us, and, you know, we're looking for opportunities to implement that. But we really need the right system in place to do that.
Yeah, we did vote to approve that, to share permits. I think we also approved, we said valet parking and streamlining of parking in the garages in Calav.
Is there a question here?
That's quite, the question's what progress did we make in the last year on that?
So we, we've reached out to Caltrain about sharing their lot, and their response was that they added four new trains to the Calav station per day, and they wanted to wait and see how that worked out before they gave any parking away.
This is for our garage, like valet parking in our Calav garage?
Yeah, so we, during the installation of solar panels, about three months ago, four months ago, we implemented valet parking on a temporary basis in the Calav Business District. And we actually saw zero cars valet during, I think it was about a month-long period. If you remember, we brought you some of the occupancy numbers for the Calav Business District for the garage discussion a couple of weeks ago. Aside from the 12 to 2:00 p.m. hours, the garages and lots are not really at a high occupancy rate. They're about 60, 66%.
Okay, interesting. And then one last thing, we passed in that last motion with Evergreen Park was, we said we should accelerate a TMA for Calav. I mean, is that making progress as well?
Do you want to? Yes, we've definitely discussed this with the TMA. They seem very interested in it. They've just recently hired an executive director at their last TMA board meeting, and the new director seems very interested in doing that.
Great. Thank you. So in terms of the target density, which seems to be a key question, did you guys give consideration to the underlying zoning differences between Mayfield and Evergreen Park, which seem, seem to be very different? I think most of the people here were from Evergreen Park. I think we had one person from Mayfield.
We did, and if you, the pilot actually allocated a larger number of employee permits to the Mayfield zone. And if you remember my response to Councilmember Holman's question about the balancing slide...
Yeah, but you have this one number, 60%. Why not have two numbers, like one for the R1 neighborhood and one for the higher-zoned neighborhoods?
So the 60% is really just our first attempt at surfacing the idea of a threshold. I, you know, we fully expected the council would, you know, maybe not elect to move that forward or make some modifications to that number.
Okay. And then, I think you've heard a lot of questions about the allocation process, but it wasn't really addressed. I mean, it's kind of on your other issue slide, but it seems to be the fundamental problem driving a lot of the angst. So do you guys have a proposal to handle the allocation of permits?
Do you mean the sales of permits?
How businesses would be, yes, avoiding this land rush and just, could we have a process where businesses renew and that they don't, they know they're going to get a certain number of permits?
So the new permit system that we'll be bringing forward will enable us to do a better prioritization. Right now, the way we prioritize is we have a, you know, for the first phase of this, we had a week period where only garage and lot waitlist people could purchase permits. Then we had a week where only low-income employees could purchase permits. And then we opened it up to the general public. With the new system, we'll be able to do that in a more automated fashion that won't be just these discrete time periods. The new system will also allow us to offer the right-of-first refusal for permit renewal. So if somebody has a permit already, they'll be offered the chance to renew their permit before we release that for sale. That currently does not happen. So what happened in Phase Two of the pilot in Evergreen is a lot of the businesses that were able to purchase permits for the first six months were shut out for the second six months, and that's why we received a lot of complaints. So the new system will enable us to better manage the prioritization.
I mean, my impression, tell me if I'm right or wrong, that that's kind of the crux of the problem, is we didn't really have an issue in the first six months, but people got shut out, and that's why we're talking about this tonight, basically. Is that, is that right?
Well, you know, the downtown RPP, we still haven't sold all of the permit, permits that have been authorized, so we haven't encountered this issue. In Evergreen, the permit supply has sold out, so we're starting to see, you know, businesses completely shut out of permit purchase, which we haven't seen that issue in either of the other two RPPs. So this is a little bit unique.
Thanks.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you. So my first question was along the lines of Tom's last question there. Could you describe a little bit better how you would plan to distribute permits equally among businesses or by some measure, whether we increase 40 tonight or leave it at the 250? What would we do so that the bike shop gets some number of permits, the dentist gets some, the video store gets some?
So our recommendation before you this evening would reserve those 40 permits for businesses located outside of the Calav Parking Assessment District, which would basically be the businesses along El Camino. They're not currently authorized to buy garage and lot permits in the Calav Business District, so this is really their only option for additional parking.
Right. So are there any businesses within the RPP and within the Calav District that didn't get permits and wanted them?
That is possible.
Yeah, so I would venture that being outside of the Calav Parking District is not necessarily your best indicator for that. I'm sorry, not a question. Okay, one, one other question.
I didn't say anything.
I saw the look. And this, this is a bit more of a thought experiment, but as we go through each of these RPPs, I think something that would be helpful to us, and I would put to you is, you know, what is the fair market value of the ability to park both for residents in front of their, near their house, but also for local businesses in that area? Right? So that's just a question. I think it would be helpful information if we could have that for these RPPs as we go through and skin the cat each time. So the question was, what's the fair market value of an RPP permit for an employee?
We'll try to bring that to you the next time we come forward with an RPP.
I have a couple of questions, hopefully brief. What is the city's ability, if we wanted to, to prioritize classes of businesses? One of the topics that came up is, well, these kinds of businesses, those kinds of businesses, and particularly under the new system, is that something we would be able to do?
So we've talked, you know, Hillary, Philip, and I have talked a lot about this, and I think we would need our new permit system in place. We would need our new permit system in place, and we would need the Business Registry to work a little bit better on our end and include a couple more fields of information than it currently does. I would not, under our current configuration and with our current permit system and vendor, I would not recommend doing that now. I think we would have a lot of mistakes, and we would, you know, be coming to you with a lot of corrections and explaining a lot of errors that would be unnecessary and... and, you know, highly probable under our current system. So I would recommend waiting until we get our new permit system and making some tweaks to the Business Registry to better connect those two and take the human judgment out of it and make it a little more automated.
Okay, and thank you. All my other questions got asked already, so we'll now open for comments and motions. And I see a light from former mayor Sharf.
Thank you. Actually, one further question. I did note in the staff report that it says, you know, which you said is the Mistful Code does not allow businesses outside of the California Avenue Business District to buy in the garages. Is that something we should change?
I think we could look into that and come back with an ordinance to change that if we were directed to.
Well, we could direct you. I really wasn't sure it was the right thing to do, one or the other, and I-
Why don't we look at it and then maybe see what-
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Feel free to come back if you think it's the right thing. I don't want to direct you tonight. With that said, I will make the motion. So I'll move the staff recommendation with the following changes. All right? And so the first change would be that we would, in number two, we would strike that and we would add that we will have a new Zone G created on El Camino Real, and Zone G would include the unrestricted parking on the east side of El Camino Real from College Avenue to Park Boulevard. Okay? Then, under number B, it would say, increase employee permits for employers located outside of the California Avenue Business District by 40 and distribute these employee permits within new zones A, B, C, and D initially, would be the new word, and then after Zone G is approved by Caltrans, then those permits would be distributed in Zone G. And then I think we should, since I can't, and I've been going back and forth in my head on this, but I think we should strike in E, the words, and maintaining an on-street parking occupancy of 60% or less in the RPP district, because I don't feel we have enough information tonight to make that decision, frankly. And then, finally, so my concern would be, what happens if, for some reason, Caltrans doesn't approve it? I think the answer is that if Caltrans doesn't approve it, then in a year, we need to come back and reevaluate the 40 permits or just where we are, because I know the neighborhood wanted this to be temporary. I heard they don't need it to be temporary if we move the parking to El Camino, but I do think we need to look at that. And the reason I chose a year, not six months, is it may take six months from the date we submit. It's going to take a month. That puts us over into the next RPP cycle, and that's why I chose a year period. So I just want to see if we have all of that up here at the moment, I guess, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
I beat you to it.
All right.
So you want to look at Roman numeral five there and strike the last half of the sentence about, and maintaining an on-street parking occupancy of there? Okay.
And then Roman numeral two would be, we would add a second part of that that would say, move them to Zone G upon Caltrans approval?
Right, it would say, previously Zone A, B initially, and then, or we could just say, and move them. That'd be fine.
Okay.
And move them to Zone G when Zone G is approved.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So the need could add?
I think we do need a sentence that says, if Zone G is not approved, then we should come back in a year to reevaluate. I think that was it. Was that it?
Just so we're clear, would we assume that the one-year period is within now as opposed to one year starting from when we get the response from Caltrans?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the permanent program will start on April 1st, so I would say, within a year of April 1st, is that acceptable?
It's acceptable.
Okay.
Care to speak further to your motion?
Just briefly, I want to say, I think this is a good compromise. Hopefully, we get it approved, and hopefully, there's absolutely no impact on the neighborhood. Hopefully, everyone's happy. Obviously, we can't control that, and that's why we need to come back and reevaluate it if, for some reason, it doesn't work out that way. I think everything else on this, I think, works for everyone, assuming that all happens. So I think that's all I have.
I'll just speak briefly to it. Parking is a scarce resource, and we need to manage it, and the reality is that either today or in the future, you know, there may not be enough supply, no matter what we do, to meet all potential demand for it. At the same time, I think we need to recognize that a neighborhood is a neighborhood and not just a parking resource, and neighborhood character needs to be a real constraint on this process. I think what we have in front of us is a pragmatic step forward, right? I think it will improve the situation. It will provide some immediate relief to, you know, some of the rinks and kinkles, sort of the kinks and wrinkles, you know, that we were exposed during this process, because we are blazing some new territory here. I mean, we're still sort of in beta mode on these kinds of things, right? And I think, that said, I think there's recognition that, you know, a lot of the things that we really want to get, the endpoint that we really want to get to are contingent on, you know, information technology, which isn't in place yet, and so I think we need to keep moving forward on that. But at this point in time, I think this is the right thing to do.
Thanks.
And we have lights on from, I have Councilmember Holman, then Councilmember Fine, then-
Is your light on again?
No. Okay. So I have Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Fine, Councilmember DuBois, followed by Councilmember Koo.
So what, clarification on one thing, which I think I just didn't hear, which is, why a year from April 1 as opposed to a year from now? I think I just didn't hear that.
The permanent program will start on April 1st. The current pilot expires on March 30th.
But we don't expect to, I think, didn't you say earlier that was like six months or so that we should hear from Caltrans? So I don't know why we have to coordinate the one year with the permit program as opposed to, you know, I'm saying, it's like, why couldn't we make it six months as opposed to one year from April when the permits get issued?
Well, so my read of the motion is we will temporarily assign the permits to Zones A, B, C, and D, and then upon approval from Caltrans, we will reassign those to Zone G, and then we're going to come back to you in a year if we are not able to reassign those to present the current occupancy data and discuss some alternatives. The permits expire in a six-month and one-year timeframe. Employee permits are six months, resident permits are one year, so we can really only make changes in six-month increments.
Okay, all right. And then to the maker of the motion, you removed in V the 60% occupancy or less. Why did you remove that?
I removed that because the neighborhood asked for it. That's why I removed it.
Yeah, to me, it's like, I won't try to make this amendment, but I will just say that, just looking at the photographs that were in part of the presentation, that what looked like more neighborhood was 40%.
Let's not get into trying to figure out what that is. I mean, I think if-
I'm just leaving, I'm just telling you what my impression is.
Yeah.
I'll weigh in on it too for a second on the procedural thing. I mean, I think technically, we probably could approve something tonight, but I actually think, you know, it may not be appropriate. I think there are policy implications to this, and it's a discussion which maybe ought to be agendized on its own, right? So-
I didn't mean to forestall it either. I still assumed, even though this was out, the concept of, is there a threshold, is something that would still sort of be on our plate, you know, as something to be, you know, having further discussion with the council about?
Yeah, and all I'm doing is just saying, like, what my impression was based on the presentation, and I don't know what time of day those were, if there was like, that was, those photos were taken and compared over a period of several days, and that you kind of arrived at what was typical or how you arrived at that, but I think those are my only, I think those are my only questions. Thanks.
Councilmember DuBois.
So, I think this is like a rare occurrence, second week in a row, I think we've had businesses and residents come to us in agreement, which is nice to see. I just want to point that out. I think we still need to address the key question, which is why have office permits in a residential neighborhood? You know, state law says we can issue an RPP for residents and nearby merchants and special groups like schools, you know, and I think we're the only city to extend this to general office parking. And I do think we still need to figure out a way to prioritize them on businesses. It's going to come back once demand goes up. I was one of the original authors of the colleagues' memo that started this district back in 2016, and in that memo, we were suggesting a target of like 10%. And so if we're going to allow business parking, I think we really have to say, what's the right level for an R1 neighborhood? And maybe Mayfield is different because it's not R1. I think lumping those two together and talking about them as a single district is a lot of source of the angst we're hearing tonight. And then when this came to us a year ago, we had a long discussion at council about reducing business permits over time, similar to downtown. I don't want to lose that concept either. At that time, we all agreed that we would wait until the Cal Ave garage was built. And I think that still makes sense, but that was our discussion. It wasn't about a fixed occupancy rate. So I'm glad we're considering the zones along El Camino like we did with South Gate. I think that was the right motion. I was going to make a similar motion. But I still think we haven't, we haven't addressed the allocation issue in this motion.
Do you want to propose an amendment?
Yeah, I think I will. And I would like to point out that I think, you know, this is, there's a lot of C in zoning around here, and so I do think we should prioritize merchants, you know, local retailers and local retail services, and I think, I think retail services is an important concept, and I think that would include medical, but it's different than a regional or global service. And then one other thought I had is, and I think I'm fine with it tonight, but basically, we're moving the unlimited parking in El Camino now to further down on El Camino, probably between Cal Ave and Page Mill, so we may just be shifting the problem. Depends how far Stanford Parkers want to walk, I think, but it's a good start. So I have two amendments. And the first one, I'll throw out there, I think, Greg, you said you didn't, you didn't think we needed it, but, you know, to have staff come back with a recommendation on selling permits in the business district garages to ensure that they're fully utilized, I think, hearing that they're not being filled up, you know, is a concern.
No, I just didn't want to make a choice tonight to tell them to do it. I'm fine with it. Direct them to come back with a recommendation.
Okay, so did you capture that?
Accepted it.
So it was just to have staff come back with a recommendation on selling permits to business district garages, to businesses outside the district, I think. And I think that was acceptable.
It was.
And then the second amendment-
You need to fix the language, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to wordsmith the language. So that one was accepted. And then the second one was basically to direct staff to come back with an allocation process that would prioritize neighborhood serving, retail, and retail services and the allocation of permits.
So I just had to ask staff a question. You said you don't have the software yet to do this. It seems-
So we could tie it to the new software, and I think that would make sense.
I didn't hear a date on that. I mean, if it, you know, if it's an intention, that's one thing. I think you need to cut us a little slack here on our ability to-
Yeah, that's totally fine. I think, again, this is going to come back after these 40, so we have some time, but, and again, it could be tied to the new software.
Mr. Mayor, I also suggest that you add, to the extent feasible, there will be some legal review that's required, because all of these programs do need to fit within the parameters set by state law.
You know, Tom, staff's thought about this. They know we're concerned about it. It's tied somewhere far out there. I mean, I have no doubt you're going to be on the council for a while. So, you know, why don't you, why don't you wait till they get the software and then, you know, we're going to start the Cal Ave garage. That'll probably change things as well, and you'll see how this works after a year. I think we should wait.
I mean, I think, again, we saw demand for 40, so we wanted to expand by 40. I'm just concerned the next project comes, so I'll just make it as a motion to see if there's a second. To direct staff to return with an allocation process, yep, and the timeframe, you know, will be determined by staff, I guess. Did I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, I just don't want to wait until we're behind again. I just want to make sure that this is just captured. I'm not saying it needs to occur by a certain date, but I think the allocation process is going to be important, and this is, again, the first district where we've run out of inventory, but I think it's an issue we're going to encounter in other RPPs.
So what I'm going to, so we have a, an amendment, we have a motion for an amendment, we have a second. So what I'm going to do is zero out the lights, and if anybody would like to speak to the amendment, oh, yeah, they should register and, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holman, would you care to speak to your second?
Yeah, this was, I'm supporting this and strongly supporting it because it also was the, also included, if I remember correctly, as a part of the original colleagues' memo. And this is what especially, I mean, it takes care of, you know, the dentists that we're talking about, takes care of, you know, the bike shop, those kinds of businesses that we really do want to support and prioritize them over general office, and that was the original intention and direction in the original colleagues' memo.
Are there any other speakers to, any speakers to the amendment? And that motion passes with Councilmember Sharf, sorry, I see my name with a red, with Councilmember Sharf and Councilmember Fine opposing, and Councilmember Niss not present. There were two other speakers, Councilmember DuBois, are you finished?
Yes.
So there were two other speakers, which were Councilmember Koo and Councilmember Fine and Councilmember Koo to the main motion.
So I was going to just say that you guys don't have an enviable job over here with our land use going max to growth, you know, with the housing plan coming up and everything. So thank you for the presentation today. I think Councilmember Holman basically has already asked a question, because I was looking at, hopefully, that once Cowtrain, Caltrans makes their decision, I was hoping it could be upon their decision that we revisit, but it sounds like you said that it's decided every six months, and that's a hard six months.
Yeah, because permits are issued and somebody has the expectation that they'll be able to park in a particular zone for six months. We could, we'd have to rescind the permit and then send them a new permit for a different zone.
Is it possible for you guys to look up what I asked about the live-work units and how their parking situation is and what are the regulations behind it?
We can ask the planning folks to do some research on the conditions of approval and the entitlement for those. If you give us the specific address or location.
It's in the 1900- It's in the 1900 block of the El Camino. I forgot the exact address. So how does this work? So I'm asking a question, when would, when does this answer come back?
I'm not sure. Hillary's left for the evening, so we'll have to get with the planning people and find out where we can get you that information.
Does it have to be in a public meeting again, or is this some-
Why don't you, we'll use our best effort. I mean, if it's fairly simple for us to do, it's just something we could send to the whole council, you know, we wouldn't need to actually bring it back. Just a response to a question.
Staff is okay with this?
Can I just confirm, are you talking about where Dr. Wu is located?
Yeah, that whole slew of lift work units. So overall, you know, thank you to Maker and the Second for bringing this up. Overall, I'm in support of it, but there was something that disturbed me, somebody who mentioned that, you know, office employees are not expendable. No, they're not expendable, but I think we need to get it right. The owner of a building and the employer are responsible for ensuring parking is available for their employees, not the neighborhood and not the residents. So I just want to make sure I point that out, and that I agree, office employees are not expendable. So thank you.
Council member Fine.
Thank you. Just a couple quick comments, and then one exhortation for my colleagues. So one, council member Koo, you, I think you just mentioned the max growth of housing and our land use. If I recall correctly, I don't think we have a single office project in the pipeline this year, and we have one housing project of 56 units. So I don't think that's to the max. Council member DuBois, you asked a question, you know, why are we doing these parking or employee permits in the RPPs? And I actually think that's a good guiding question for us. Some members of the public did point out to this fact that, you know, we have these neighborhood-serving businesses, some of them may have had parking reductions, some of them may just be oversubscribed in terms of employees, and that's something we have to deal with in one way or the other, right? Whether we say, no employees parking here, or some threshold, or put them in garages, whatever it is. I would put to all of us that we're really not going to get a handle on this until we begin using our pricing power for parking, and that means our commercial districts and also our residential districts, where we're actually charging these employees some fair rate that moves them first into the garages, second into the commercial districts, and at the very last point, do we actually want these employees parking in neighborhoods? So I would really encourage us to do that. And then just a second question. I don't mean this in a tongue-in-cheek way at all. This is the second week we've spent more than two hours on an RPP item, and last week we were talking about 10 employee permits, this week we're talking about 40. And when we opened last week, one of my comments was that I worry our RPP districts are becoming too customized, and we are really getting into the weeds on some of these items. I think this is a good motion, I'm going to support it, but if we do want to protect our neighborhoods from parking intrusions, from these commercial impacts, we may want to think of better, more holistic, systematic solutions to it, rather than trying to figure out, is the level 40%? Is it 60? Is it 40 new permits divided among low-income businesses? This is a solvable problem. Other cities do have systems in place citywide, and I would encourage us to think in those terms, but for the time being, happy to support the motion.
Thank you. There, council member Tanaka. If there are no further questions, let's vote on the main motion. And that passes eight in favor, zero opposed, with council member Niss not present. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff, thank you to the neighborhoods, thank you to the businesses, and we have a plan. Thank you to Josh.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if you would just indulge me for just a one-minute comment here. These guys are great. This is the entirety of our transportation staff. We've lost Chris Carvalho, who was on our staff, okay? These guys are custom designing RPP projects. They're doing intensive engagement, they're supporting the evolution of our TMAs, they're working on the parking garages programs, the technology we need to revamp our IT systems, they're doing advocacy with regional agencies, they're supporting our rail committee in grade SEPs, they're doing traffic calming and safety improvements, many in response to neighborhood complaints, they're implementing the bike and pedestrian plan, they're resignalizing lights all over town, these guys. So, I mean, I think both the scale of the work that they have-
I only see two of them, though.
Yeah, so-
Where's the rest?
So I know they're dying, saying, boy, how do we get this? How do we remake our old systems and stuff? And even those are tough. Anybody's done IT redesign and integration efforts across different departments knows how even tough those jobs are. So I just really want to shout out, they're, they're doing a fantastic management effort.
No, seriously, thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, I think it's, for what it's worth, I believe it's effort well-spent. Parking is something that people in town are really passionate about. With that, we'll move on to, I don't think there's anything on the intergovernment, yeah, I don't think there's anything on intergovernmental legislative affairs, right? So council member questions, comments, and announcements. Council member Wolback.
Attended the first meeting of the year, as far as I know, of the Transportation Management Association. It was my first meeting as the liaison. They are, they actually, at that meeting last week, signed a new contract with a new firm that will be coming in to be the staff for our TMA. The firm is called Altrans, and they were very interested to hear from, from myself, from Nielsen Buchanan, who's there, and from the board members of the TMA who were there, about widespread interest in being more creative and possibly expanding to Calav and doing other ambitious things over the coming year and years with the TMA. So I think it showed a lot of promise. There's also discussion about, you know, further collaboration with neighboring cities, and I'll be meeting with a council member from Sunnyvale and a council member from Mountain View coming up to talk about how we can work together more.
Super. Other council member questions, comments, and announcements? Seeing none? Thank you very much.